Fifteenth. All right, so I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven oh one P M. In attendance are myself, Chairman David Gersonhaber, Vice Chair Donna D., and Supervisors Jim Johnson and Betsy Audgers. Also in attendance are Township Solicitors Guy Donatelli, Township Operations Manager Jeff Eastburn, Township Controller and Office Manager Melissa Ortega, and Township Secretary Stacy Hollis. And there are twelve members of the public in attendance. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, now I'd like to open the floor to public comment. This public comment can be on any items that are included in the tonight's agenda. Commenters must state your name and whether you are a resident of the township or a non-resident taxpayer in the township. If you do not identify yourself, your comments will not be included in the official minutes. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Please? So, oh, what you could do is walk up to the microphone, and then there's a little guy with a talkie. There you go.
Hi, I usually speak so loudly I didn't think I needed a microphone. So, hi, at first I want to say thank you to everybody for all your time and efforts and energy that you put into our community, and thank you to those in service as well. I sincerely appreciate your service and your sacrifice. With that being said, I want to say thanks for all the years I've lived here, which has been better than two decades. I love our township. I'm in Franklin Township, by the way. I'm M. Stri, and I am a taxpayer, and I'm a resident, so I don't know how else I'm supposed to identify myself. This is my first time. Thanks. So I'm hoping this falls under the budget category because I see that budget was listed here, and what I'm wondering is, I had a wonderful time at the Fall Festival in 2024, and I'm hoping that we can maybe consider it for next year because, while I greatly appreciated it in 2024, I sincerely and deeply missed it in 2025. And what I'm thinking is perhaps there was a cost-related item. So I was thinking of all the different ways we could offset those costs besides having volunteers or donors to, you know, do things, volunteers to run things. I was thinking maybe the cost of boots. I didn't know what that was, but, you know, everything's gone up, more vendors we have, more boots. Basically, because I'm in finance, I look towards how can we make money from this because, frankly, we're a business, and how can we not make more money? But beyond that, I also wanted to say how much I appreciated it and what a big difference it made to me personally, because last year, my husband was traveling for a family matter, and he was away, and my cousin was supposed to come visit, but her husband got sick and couldn't. And I was by myself, and honestly, my surprise, I'd forgotten that it was there. I know, the signs are right there. I literally live right there. And when I woke up that morning and I saw everybody going there, it meant so much to me to have someplace to go and to walk over, and I felt like such a part of the community, and everybody was so nice, and it was so much fun, and the band was great. And I got to tell you, I just sat in my little chair and had my popsicle, and it was the best time and walked around, but I loved the music. But when you think about it, what's in it for you guys? What's in it for our township really, besides community and the unity of that? You know, I'm not the only person who I'm sure felt like that. I'm sure that there's people, whether they're older or younger, because everybody grapples with something, but having that community around is so important, and I felt like that really added to it. And as far as finances go, do you know, even though I'm right here, I had never been to Daddy O's since they opened. And that day, I got to tell you, I walked by somebody who had an incredible cheesesteak, and I kept smelling them, and I kept saying, where'd you get that? And people kept saying Daddy O's. And I went over to the Daddy O's truck, and I got my little cheesesteak, and I sat there.
Mr. Gersonhaber, this is all wonderful, but this is getting far afield for primary comment period, and this would be perfectly appropriate at the end. Certainly not suggesting she, this young lady stopped, but she should wind up.
Okay, so what I'm looking at, volunteers, cost of boots, let's raise it. Business, besides sponsorships, people don't want to sponsor because who's going to really see that? People want to be there and be part of it. Show them how they can make money. Get the Milburns to be interested in this. God knows their boots would sell out in a second. So how can we make money? Local businesses like Daddy O's prospered. So I'm saying, let's make money from this. Let's help the township. Let's give us community. Let's give us money for those funds. And while we're at it, if possible, could we clean up the garden that's right there too? For safety reasons, if for nothing else, because on so many different levels, having it clean and not overgrown would really benefit the safety of everybody. So.
Yeah, so, yeah, I thank you for your comments, and I think we all agree with you. So we did not not have a Fall Festival this year because of budgetary reasons. We had put on two projects. We did two Fall Festivals in two years, and the staff were just overwhelmed. They put in a tremendous amount of work to put that on. One of the reasons that it was such an amazing event is the amazing staff we have. We only have three. And so it had nothing to do with money. They just said, hey, can we take a year off? And that's why we did the movie night instead this year. So we're all on board, and the plan is one hundred percent to have Fall Festival back in 2026. That's, that is one hundred percent. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, I went to Art on the Green, which was in Old Newcastle, and I have a bag full of, because I'd gone there last year too, it was the weekend after ours, and I have a bag full of wonderful ideas and people who want to participate. I also have some great people who are local. There's a business called Ellie Jam Farms. They're right on Flint Hill Road, and I know they want to participate, but they said to me, we need a date. I said, I don't know. I don't have anything to do with it, but I'm just saying.
So I'll tell you what, yeah, you're, give your name to Stacy Hollis, and you can help organize the event this year.
That would be a lot of fun. I'm looking for it. Kudos. I just want to help out.
Yeah, no, that's great. Stacy's work, just send your information to Stacy and.
Best friends.
Yeah, so, yeah, we were, when we, when, when we had decided that this was not going to be a, a year for the Fall Festival, the thought was, well, we'll do the movie night this year and bring it back in 2026. So thank you for volunteering. I'm assuming you're volunteering. I'm not volunteering you to do anything. So that's great. I appreciate it. And, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And while I can see everybody who's here, who are the people up in the squares, please? I'm sorry, I can't see that far. Upper left, please.
So these are township residents?
Okay.
So.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Okay, do we have any other public comment? All right, with that, next agenda item, we'll go on to the treasurer, no, Board of Supervisors Meeting Minutes.
So, thanks, Dave. So let me make a motion that the board approve the September seventeenth, twenty twenty five Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes. Could I have a second for that? Bye, thanks. Hey, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries four zero. And then I make a motion that the board approve the October sixth, twenty twenty five Board of Supervisors Workshop Meeting Minutes. Can I have a second for that? Okay, I'll go and give it to you, Jim. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, four zero. Thank you.
But next up is the treasurer's report given by Melissa Ortega.
The September twenty twenty five treasurer's report includes the following dispersments. The General Fund with dispersments and transfers of one hundred twenty thousand thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. The Park and Rec Fund with dispersments of eight thousand six hundred one dollars and forty-eight cents. The Open Space Fund with dispersments of five thousand seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents. The Capital Reserve Fund with dispersments of two hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents. The Emergency Services Fund with dispersments of eighty-four thousand seven hundred two dollars and three cents. And the Fire Hydrant Fund with dispersments of five hundred eighty dollars and eighty cents. The Wastewater Treatment Plant with dispersments of zero, leaving a balance in all funds, three million ninety-nine dollar. Three million. Three million ninety-nine thousand forty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. That's a tongue twister.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, I'll make a motion. The board approved the September twenty twenty five treasurer report as presented by Melissa Ortega. Thanks, Donna. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Zoning Officer's Report. This report was compiled by the Township Zoning Officer Mark Gordon. The month of September twenty twenty five, there were ten permits issued, two thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and twelve cents in permit fees collected, zero in miscellaneous fees, zero in recreations and open space fees, zero in impact fees were collected, and twelve inspections were performed.
Next is the Planning Commission Report. I see John Gontar's on the phone.
Yes, the Planning Commission met on October second on twenty twenty five. The minutes for the June fifth meeting were discussed and approved. There were no public comments. The main order of business was the consolidation of two lots on eighteen twenty nine New London Road. Solicitor Donatelli gave an overview of the property and explained the owner was consolidating two lots into one. The reason for the consolidation is the owner, Ms. Berkowitz, wanted to install solar panels, and the proposed location of the solar panels straddled two property lines, which were both owned by Ms. Berkowitz. Our solar ordinance prohibits solar panels straddling so block lines. So Ms. Berkowitz, in order to simplify things, basically consolidated the two lots into one. Mr. Harris discussed a review letter by Pononi Engineering. There was nothing really significant in there, other than we had to make some changes to some zoning tables to be consistent with the low-density residential zoning district, and that was going to be done. The property is serviced by a driveway, and currently there are three lots which are serviced by that driveway. With this consolidation, we're going from the three lots to two lots, so the driveway will now service two lots instead of three. So the verbiage for the right-of-way of the easement has to be changed. Given those things, of those issues, the Planning Commission conditionally approved the subdivision pending those changes. Any questions?
John, I don't. So I'm assuming that that was your focus, was on the consolidation of the lots. You didn't talk about the location of the solar panels. I'm assuming that's a different submission.
Separate issue because, you know, once the lot is consolidated, the issue, which was the main issue, which was crossing the property lines, that disappears. Once you look at it after that point, I don't think there's really going to be an issue with the location of the solar panels. But that's a, that's a separate review.
Reason I was going to ask is I didn't see that on the plans, but it's because it's going to come, it'll come back to us when the.
This was a subdivision of that property to consolidate the two lots, but for this purpose. Okay, so that's a separate issue.
Yeah, so what, the next step is when they put in their solar panels, they will submit a different permit to get those assembled and installed.
Correct.
Okay.
That'll go through your, the zoning officer, and I guess to you guys for review as well.
Okay.
And so subsequent to that, there were no public comments, and the meeting was adjourned.
Okay, that was a very quick meeting, by the way.
It was.
So with that, I will make a motion to approve the lot consolidation plan for eighteen twenty nine New London Road, last revised September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, and as reviewed and recommended by the Franklin Township Planning Commission at their October second, twenty twenty five meeting, having met the conditions of Pononi Associates' letter dated September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty five. The applicant will continue to work with the Township Controller to keep its escrow account up to date and ensure that all invoices have been paid prior to the release of the recorded plans. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Steve, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Right. So next on the agenda, we have the West Grove Fire Company to talk about their budget proposal for twenty twenty six.
Hello, my name is Eric Falker. As most of you know, for the audience, I serve as the fire chief at West Grove Fire Company. So the, the budget proposal came with sticker shock to every municipality that we sent it to last year when we were here last year. I think at that time, Avondale was asking for a forty-five percent increase, and I said that we will be asking for a similar increase next year, knowing that we are shifting, that we're having difficulty with covering the amount of calls that we have with volunteer fire response. So what this budget request represents is mainly a shift towards more career staff, and you can see that in the follow-up. Did you get the follow-up budget summary that I sent last week? So. That's the line-by-line with the three-year comparison that you asked for. That's that. And then there was a a little summary of what you were getting in the twenty twenty six budget that you didn't get in the twenty twenty five budget with the increased career staff numbers.
Perfect. All right.
So essentially, we, we held a meeting at the fire, at the fire station, and unfortunately, no, you know, Franklin was not able to be there. We spent about an hour going over how we've gotten to this point as far as responses, the amount of calls that we're now having to handle, and the volunteers that we currently have to try to cover the calls. So we're fortunate here in this community. We don't have decreasing volunteer numbers. We, we are maintaining our volunteer numbers well. The issue is that the amount of calls are increasing beyond what we can, we can't add enough volunteers to cover those holes essentially. So to give you an idea, to be an active volunteer at West Grove, you have to run ten percent of the fire calls to be considered an active member. Now, in twenty twenty, that was very easy. So our members who ran sixty calls per year were active members for all of those years. Unfortunately, now, that we're likely going to run about a thousand fire calls this year, that member now doesn't even make ten percent. Our faithful volunteers who were running a hundred calls for the last fifteen years are still coming to a hundred calls per year. The only issue is that that used to represent a much larger percentage, and now that's just the bare minimum of running ten percent. So essentially, what we have is a pool of volunteers who continue to be faithful responders, but we just have an increasing number of responses that we have to make. So the, basically, the volunteers are watered down essentially, and that represents our apparatus leaving the fire station about thirty percent of the time. It's, that's the number, thirty percent, an apparatus leaves the station with less than a qualified crew, meaning that's three firefighters on a fire apparatus who were certified firefighters. So about a little less than a third of the time, our apparatus leaves the station with less than that. All right, whether that's a driver-only, driver and a, and a second person. So we're at a critical point in our history where we feel as though we need to increase more career staff numbers, and that's literally what you're seeing in this budget. So I think for the total budget of four-point-six-million-dollar budget, this is representing mostly career staff. If you look at the number that we sent over, I think of the nine-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in fire staffing or fire cost, seven-hundred-thousand was, was basically, you know, the, the increased career staff numbers. So this is to pay for more paid people. We thought last year when we visited here that this would also include a full-time fire chief. We did not put that in the budget for twenty twenty six with the consolidation talks with Avondale Fire Company ongoing. It's, we're looking at next month in November, at maybe having a, a final vote to make sure that both companies want to go in that direction and have a consolidation. What will that look like in twenty twenty seven when it comes to staffing? I don't think, as, as the part of the operations committee of the consolidation with the Avondale leadership, I don't think that we're going to be able to close any stations or be able to cover the vast district with less than the four stations that we currently have between us. So I don't think that there's going to be any decreasing cost with the merger. We're not going to be able to cut staff or, you know, cover it with less people. I think these numbers are going to go up as we move forward. So the current schedule just at West Grove, this is West Grove numbers, if we were to cover all of the hours that we currently have for EMS and fire, it would take forty-two full-time employees just for West Grove right now. We have done it largely leading up to the last few years with a violent, with a, a part-time workforce, with transient workers who have full-time jobs elsewhere. So we share often with Avondale, Oxford, and Longwood Fire Company, we share employees, believe it or not. They, many of them work two full-time jobs essentially. So what we found was that when you are the part-time employer, you get what's left over. So there was a shift that we really needed to move towards more full-time employees. So to give you an idea, we, we hired six more full-timers in the twenty twenty five budget. So that raised us from ten to sixteen full-timers. We wanted to add eight more full-timers for the twenty twenty six budget to go from the sixteen full-timers to twenty-four for twenty twenty five, to try to help us with stability of the schedule. And that's basically having a platoon system. We do what's called a twenty-four-seventy-two system, twenty-four hours on, seventy-two hours off. That's what the, the schedule is. So by having this, this system set in place, we have, you know, with twenty-four full-time employees, we could have six members per platoon. We really would like to have seven members per platoon going forward. That would be a pool of twenty-eight full-timers. But incrementally, we're trying to get to that point. That does not include the consolidation in twenty twenty seven, wherever this leads us, you know. But I, I would venture to say that we're going to need more staff members when we have a consolidated department, having to require, you know, cover, you know, such a large district. But for the twenty twenty six budget, what you're seeing, that huge number, is really representing mostly career staff jump. That's, that's what you're looking at there, and that's the number that you guys have in front of you. The other two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase is cost of apparatus. I don't have to tell any municipality that what a salt truck cost or a snowplow cost now compared to twenty twenty. The, the number's probably doubled for you guys, same with us. So we just ordered a new piece of apparatus that we, we publicized for, it's a fire engine that can carry some rescue tools, and that's one-point-one-million dollars now. To give you an idea, we took delivery in twenty twenty one of a similar apparatus that was seven-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars. So these are just the increases that we're seeing across the board with the industry, but you also see that as well in your industry. So that's not anything different. Is there any questions that I can answer about the need?
Yeah, I mean, I think you've laid it out pretty clearly. My question is, why are the number of calls increasing? Our population is increasing, isn't increasing very much.
So as far as the increasing call volume, we think that mainly it's the, it's infrastructure is part of it. We run a fair amount of accidents. I don't have to tell anybody in this room that's lived here for the last fifteen years that there's more cars on eight ninety-six than there were fifteen years ago. We have a stop sign at eight forty-one and, and eight ninety-six that we didn't have for many years because of increased volume. So we see that. The other issue is the new housing developments over the past twenty years. Many of them, if any of you live in a new housing development, what's that? Not, not in the past, like, well, I mean, we have a couple of new housing developments here that were, that came about when I moved here, twenty-plus years ago, was at Independence, down off eight ninety-six and Betsy Ross. So those are the, the, off of Connor Mill. Most of these housing developments get, they, they, they get solicited by the, the alarm system company. So we have many residential fire alarms. That's, that's a huge number. Fire alarms is our biggest, is our biggest call, so.
You say fire alarms are your biggest calls. You're talking about false fire alarms?
So I don't, this is the tough part to, to understand. The fire alarms go off for a reason. Is that for me?
No.
Okay. The, the fire alarms go off for a reason. So for example, they're tripped because a cooking mishap because of drywall dust. Somebody was working in the house. Those are the types of examples that we have. So, so they went off for the, for a reason.
I, I mean, not requiring a fire response, right? It's a, it's an alarm that doesn't require a fire response.
It requires, every alarm requires a fire response because.
No, I understand that, but you're there and there's no fire to put out.
Correct. So when we, when we get there, most fire alarms, you know, fortunately, the building is not on fire. Like, that is the, that's the stark reality. The downside is that you have to answer every single one because there's going to be that one that you show up to that requires, you know, a building being put out, you know, a building fire. So that's the downside. So that's the, the issue. So we're running, and the other issue that we're seeing is because of our EMS units being stretched as thin as they are, and they're running patients. We're seeing an improvement with the, the Jennersville Campus opening. So our early numbers in, in August, we took thirty-seven patients to Jennersville Campus, and in, and in September, we took forty-two patients to the Jennersville Campus. So our teams are working together with the, the teams at the Jennersville Campus for, for Christiana Care as to what patients are appropriate to take there and which patients are not. So we transport about a hundred and eighty to two hundred patients per month. You know, of our three hundred ambulance calls, we transport about sixty percent, roughly sixty-five percent. So of those numbers, we're still running most of them to Westchester and back. So our ambulances are still tied up for an extended period of time. Our hope is that if we can transport half of our patients, fifty percent of the transported patients, so, you know, seventy to a hundred patients a month can go to Jennersville, it keeps our ambulances in the district. Therefore, the ambulances are available to take more calls. So that leaves the fire crews that are left waiting for an ambulance to come from Longwood and a paramedic unit to come from Sadsburyville. The fire crews leave the station and go out. So they're doing more EMS assist. All right, so the fire truck gets there, stabilizes the patient until the ambulance can get there. So EMS is an increase on the fire strain as well. So these are all factors that are factoring into the increased call volume over the past five years. Coming out of COVID, it was a little slow. Like, we were pretty, if you look at, our numbers are on our website over the past fifteen years, and you can see between literally five and six hundred calls is what we ran for a good ten-year period. But literally, over the last three years, we've gone from running six hundred, quickly went into the seven hundreds last year, eight sixty-four, and this year, we're going to be just under a thousand.
Eric, does, um, does EMS automatically get dispatched with every fire call, every fire alarm?
So we, we have our, we have EMS units on every one of our fire responses with us. There are some cases, so for example, if there's no West Grove ambulance available to assist us, and part of that, honestly, is because our EMTs are cross-trained firefighters. So if the fire truck leaves with just two members, can we use a, an EMT off of the ambulance to, to help take care of the fire emergency? So that's why we send an ambulance on our responses. But if a West Grove ambulance is not available for that, we don't tax it to Oxford or Avondale to, you know, their ambulances are already as busy as ours are. So we, we don't ask them to come for that. But does that answer that question?
Well, I think what you're saying is that.
I think what you're saying is every, when there's an alarm, it, an ambulance can get, can, if you, if the ambulance is available, it'll go with the fire truck. If it's not available, you can throw an EMT into the fire truck.
Correct. Yeah, and the, the downside.
Excuse me, Dave. Can I, can I interrupt just for a second and, and thank Mr. Foley for attending and let him know that he can be excused?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Foley.
Mr. Foley was representing eighteen twenty nine.
Oh. All right. Uh, thank, thank you, Guy. I didn't.
Yeah. Good night, Ed. Thank you.
Thanks, Guy.
Okay.
So our, our EMS crews are being overtaxed. We have been fortunate at times for fire responses where we were able to use the EMTs to staff the fire apparatus. The issue that we're running into now, and you, you have all seen the numbers, we're approaching four thousand EMS calls. And that's just the reality of where the, the services, you look at Oxford, if you look at Avondale, and you look at Longwood, their ambulances are all similar percentage increases. Um, so the ambulances are just in the firehouse less. So the ability to take a firefighter who's a firefighter EMT and is working on the ambulance today and take them off of the ambulance to staff a fire engine to make a fire response is becoming a little more difficult just by sheer numbers. That's all, and availability.
So I have a few comments. So, um, I make these comments as one of five. So I'm not speaking for the board because we haven't had this conversation. We will after you leave. But a couple of things. So I was here last year. I, I, I don't remember you making the comment that things are going to go up forty-five percent. We were shocked. I was shocked. Don't speak for me. When those number came in. I also was shocked by the fact that you didn't come to us sooner. Not, not in October, but come back to us maybe in June or July. Because this is the kind of thing that you have, you got to prepare, you got to prepare the group first for. So that's a learning. If you're going to do that kind of increase, you don't just dump it on our desk and say, good luck. It doesn't work that way. The second part thing, I think you know this, our, our income is flat. Where, if you look at our EIT and, and I, and we, we value every dollar we get. Our EIT numbers and our real estate, we don't, we haven't raised real estate taxes for I don't know how long and it's flat. So there, so when you come in and ask for a hu, I think it was a hundred thou, no, it's almost two hundred thousand dollars. No, was it three hundred thousand? How much more was it?
Total's three.
Three hundred thousand dollars. It, it doesn't exist. It, we don't, it, it doesn't exist. And, and, um, we, we have to, we, I, I, it just doesn't exist. So what I, what I would suggest, you know, we're going to talk today about how much we can provide. We have, we have, uh, looked at your EMS request and that seems reasonable. We'll, we'll, we'll figure that one out. But the fire is likely to be a lot less than you're asking for. Um, and what you, what I, what you may need to do, you know, I think it's all going to depend on what all, what all the other townships are doing, is look at how much money you, you anticipate coming in and rework your budget accordingly because it, it, it doesn't, we don't, we literally, you, you can sit with it. We don't have it. We don't have three hundred extra thousand dollars. We have a thing called MS four, which is going to be a million dollars over five years at best case. Um, we had some issues with, um, some roads, uh, an embankment due to stormwater that we have to fix. It's a safety issue. You actually know about this for Churchill Road. You, because we just talked to you about, there's things that we, we, we have to get money for, for that. And, and that's money we don't have either. We'll have to figure that out. So um, I, I respectfully ask that, you know, we will do our best. We will talk amongst ourselves and you can welcome to stay for that budget discussion. But I would, I would have you anticipate about a ten, ten percent increase in fire. Maybe what you get, we still have to talk about it and, um.
You, um, you received some feedback from the surrounding townships already, and I think, um, they've all kind of pushed back. There are, I think we're all, we all had the same kind of messaging, like this is, it's not just, you know, and we understand the situation. But it was a, it wasn't just a shock in that, my God, the number is, I mean, it's almost doubling what we're, we're paying from last year. It's kind of how we, to Donna's point, um, historically, you'd come to us earlier and say, here, this is coming. Let's talk about it. Here's why. And the way this was done was kind of like, oh, here's the bill. And we kind of got in our budget statement. And, um, I think it's, 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 uh, it was just surprising because I don't think we've, we haven't had that relationship with you in the past. Um, it just felt kind of rushed. Um, and I'm sure that that information, you know, I'm sure you've been thinking about it all year. Uh, the timing just seemed a little, a little odd to us. And, um, I think the, the other point, and I, and I don't want to belabor it is, you know, we, again, we're not, um, you know, we're not a for-profit business, right? We don't, you know, we don't, we generate money through taxes. And, um, our tax base doesn't grow. Um, and so when to, to that point, it's a fixed income. Right? And so if something goes up, something has to get cut out. Uh, and that's what we're talking about tonight after, um, after this conversation. So you know, it's, it's not a, um, this isn't a discussion in a vindictive way or, uh, or we're trying to attack you. It's just the, the reality of what we're dealing with as well.
Yeah. Look, you know, the comments. The other thing that surprised me is one of five. I would have thought, uh, you would do the consolidation first, or at least look at, because you say you don't think the consolidation is going to help you reduce, reduce, reduce costs. Like I'm thinking then why, why are you doing it? Like I, I would, I would, we're, I'm from Big Pharma. You can love me or hate me. We all, we all have, have our big companies that work with, usually if the consolidation happens, you save some money. So there are fewer at the top. I mean, you need your workers, right? You need your firefighters. They got to go out. But the people at the top, it usually seems like you, maybe you need less of them or, or maybe some administrators. I, I don't know your business, so I can't, I can just comment on my business.
Our business is everybody at the top is free and volunteer.
Okay.
Every single person at the top is a volunteer. We, we, we have, we have career staff, supervisors and, and assistant chiefs for each department. Uh, currently as you speak, but as far as consolidating costs at the top, I'm here completely free as a volunteer. I get no compensation for this.
But your administrative staff.
We have one administrative staff who works two and a half days a week and Tina, who does excellent communications and she's invaluable for a four-point million dollar, four-point-six million dollar company. I, I think that's, I think our administrative costs are probably far under what most of you would expect is my guess.
Three people too, and we're three, three to four, four million dollars. So we know where you're coming from. This is, so I, so I.
So as far as, I, I just want to, you know, come back and you, you said, you know, about the communication. Unfortunately, we did send you a communication and we would have really liked to have. It was sent with the budget request back in August and there was a notice on there to, to ask any township official to come to that meeting where we gave a full presentation, including a PowerPoint. It was two hours long, every township, but every municipality was there. Um, with the exception of Franklin, didn't have a representative and we answered questions over and over again. That was the reason that you got the follow-up supplemental information was because the question in that meeting from New London, from London Grove, from London Britain was, you know, what is the twenty twenty-six budget getting us that the twenty twenty-five budget didn't? So that was that follow-up information that we gave. So there was, there was a, a, a notice that unfortunately you weren't there, but we would have loved to have this conversation with you then.
Well, I think we would have loved to have you come to a board meeting because that's when you talk to the board.
Okay.
To the whole board. And we're the, we're the folks that make the, the decision on the, on the money. So.
And I understand that, but, but we've also run into the fact that we have seven municipalities to respond to. And here I am as a volunteer. I'm going to leave here and I'm going to go to work night shift in the emergency room up at the hospital. Uh, after I leave here to take care of patients. So this is what we do. We try our best, but honestly, like, you know, to make it a little easier on our volunteer leadership to bring in everybody to answer all of your questions. The offer was there. All right. So I apologize that we missed the opportunity to have that discussion with you. Um, I agree that you need, you know, increases of sixty percent need to be communicated a little bit sooner. Having it dumped on your lap or making it feel that way, I apologize. That's on us. And we should have given you a heads up maybe in June or July that this was coming. Um, so wasn't rushed. We worked on it through the summer. Um, as a volunteer leadership and, and the career staff leadership, we met regularly through the summer to try to come up with this. This is actually a little bit less of an ask of what we were hoping for. Um, you know, based on where we're heading. But I will tell you that a ten percent increase, and I just told, uh, Wesker Borough this yesterday. Um, a ten percent increase will place us in a position that I'm not sure that we're going to be able to make an effective response with a qualified crew to every fire call in twenty twenty-six. So that, I'm just letting you know that that's where we're.
What, what, what I suggest you should respectfully suggest you do, when you, when you come back, because once you, you'll figure out what everybody's giving you, right? You, you should know those numbers soon. Come back or, or have another meeting, whatever, whatever works for you. How, and let's talk about what, what's the ramifications of this. Okay. This is the number I got. This is our budget. Let's, let's talk about it. And so we can.
Sure. We spoke about that at the meeting at the firehouse that we had for the municipalities about what that would look like without the funding. But knowing that every municipality is in the same position as you are, cannot afford the ask, and we understand that. Um, I also, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from. But I also, you know, some of your comments, um, I hope that you don't feel as though we take this money for granted. Um, based on, you know, you have the fiduciary responsibility from the taxpayer to handle their money appropriately. We understand that. We are keenly aware of that and we respect that. So I don't want you to think that we take this lightly and that we come to you with just a handout and, you know, walk away and, and do whatever we want with the money. So, so this is, this, this went, you know, in, within mind with each of us that live in these communities and we're all taxpayers to our municipalities. So we understand the reasoning behind it. We appreciate you taking time to look at this, you know, you know, critically and asking these tough questions. And I, you know, when you guys come back with what you can afford, we will look at it together and we will come back and we'll tell you where the gaps in service will be. So we'll ask you which days, you know, you don't want firefighters being staffed and we'll go from there. So those are.
I don't appreciate that comment. So and, and we're not going to say, don't, don't stamp it for Wednesday, but I, I understand that, that maybe sure. There may be a shortcoming, maybe not all the fire trucks will have everybody, right?
We'll talk about what those, what that looks like in twenty twenty.
Because we're still giving you quite a bit of money.
You are giving us a lot of money.
Right. So I still expect fire coverage every day. It may not be the optimal that, that.
Correct. We'll talk about what those, what that service looks like based on what we can afford. All right. Any other questions? All right. Good deal. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Gerson Haber, may I ask a question?
Oh, wait. So, so just wait.
Sure, Guy.
Yeah, it's, and it's, uh, uh, good evening, Chief. My name is Guy Donatelli. I help, uh, the township out on some legal issues. Well, the, the ten percent that you mentioned in the beginning of your address, does that come from, uh, 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 regulations or is that a, a proficiency percent of to make sure your folks are, are, um, maintaining a certain level of, of experience? Where, where does the ten percent number come from?
Uh, Mr. Donatelli, I apologize for having my back turned to you just in the direction of the microphone.
That's all right. I apologize for looking at the back of your ears.
My, my wife says that's my good side. I don't know. So, uh, on the serious side, the, the ten percent is a, uh, a long time number that we use to gauge minimum activity at the firehouse to consider an active volunteer member. That's what that ten percent meant. So sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
Is it by law or is it just a number you, you guys use?
That's a, an internal standard that we used. And we actually created a different standard this year because we're shifting more towards scheduled time, which was where we're trying to cover these gaps in service with volunteers who come in and schedule their time, their hours on station. So they may not get a call, but they, why do they not get credit for being in the station for four hours to cover a fire engine? And, uh, so we went, we created a new minimum standard of a hundred and forty-four hours a year, twelve hours a month of what we call duty crew coverage. A volunteer who comes in and staffs the fire engine for twelve hours a month is considered an active member if he or she does that for the entire year. So that, that was that, that's what that number meant. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, and thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I got a question. Sorry. You, you almost got out of here too. Um, so I have, uh, you know, we, this is about the merger. Um, and consolidation, I guess is what I called him, you know, his business term. But it was the merger. You're going to merge with Avondale. Um, do you have an idea of what the synergies will be that would make this a desirable outcome for you versus? So my, my meaning is when I think about the, when you're talking about, um, asking for a significant increase now for, for West, West Grove as it stands. And then by the end of the year, you might have a totally new firefighting entity. Um, how do you capture, you know, in your mind, I'm, I'm crossing my metaphors here, but how do you capture those synergies that you think you're going to gain from the Avondale? And does that mitigate what you're going to need this year when, when, when the final organization is complete?
Yeah. Unfortunately, we're in the infancy stages trying to come up with staffing numbers and things like that for a combined department. So we're not there yet because the November meeting is when we decide. Because if, if one of the organizations doesn't want to do it, then there's no sense in doing any more work as we move forward, right? So what does it, you know, how do we put this together? What's the advantage to the Franklin Township community by doing this? Um, or the greater community in, in general. And really, and that's what it comes down to. It's more of a, a cost sharing measure as we move forward because this is going to continue to shift towards a career staff-driven model.
Right.
The, the volunteer model of, of five years ago is not viable as we move forward. And we have to drive this further with career staff coverage. So as that number increase, increases, then that's really what we're, I think the biggest advantage is cost sharing amongst ten municipalities. You know, a larger district, um, to try to absorb. And you're right, you know, when it becomes a paid fire chief and a full-time paid administrator, you do only need one. You don't need two sets of, of, you know, overhead, uh, you know, it's kind of like business model is what you're talking about. So those are the cost sharing measures as we increase. Again, there's, you know, there's, we have a, a part-time administrator and we have a volunteer fire chief and a volunteer president right now. Those positions at Avondale are the same as well. So as we move forward and we realize that we need a full-time fire chief and a full-time administrator, then that num, then there's only one. And so that, that's a big difference.
You still need to cover this, the, the two entities separate still need to cover the same amount of, uh, real estate.
Correct.
They're now.
With the square mileage.
Yeah.
So when we put the two entities together, you're looking at a ninety, ninety-four square mile district. Right now, West Grove is about seventy. So you're going to look at a, at, at a ninety-four square mile district, um, with about fifty-two thousand documented residents. Um, so, you know, if you look at most fire departments across the Commonwealth that cover, you know, municipalities or, or combined municipalities of fifty-some thousand people, the staffing numbers are pretty staggering. We're pretty fortunate to be able to get away. I think Avondale right now has twelve full-time employees and we have sixteen. We were hoping to go to twenty-four next year, but we'll curtail based on what we can afford. Um, from the, uh, the fire contract. So we'll talk about that as we move forward, but I think that, um, the, the rough thought was that we would probably need twelve-man platoons. So forty-eight people in the rotation. You're looking at forty-eight full-time employees in the rotation with probably another six. Uh, either, you know, a couple of administrative staff, but then EMS leadership and, and whatnot. So you're probably looking at fifty-four full-time employees.
I was under the impression that it was, it was, um, not a done deal, but both, both parties, Avondale and West Grove were, um, in agreement that this would be a good path forward. But then today you just said, well, we're not sure if one party is.
And I say that cautiously.
Okay.
I'm not at liberty to.
Yeah.
Speak on behalf of every member at West Grove and let alone, I'm not a member of Avondale. So I say that cautiously, that it's not a done deal. But as one of the leaders who has been moving this thing forward, I would be very, I, I would be shocked if it didn't.
Okay.
If it didn't go through, that both memberships didn't endorse it. But that's just my opinion. That is literally an opinion and I cannot make a.
We say, we say one of five on the side of the table.
Uh, one of five or, or whatever, one of, I guess.
Yeah, I, I know I beat you up a little bit, but I do want to, and I know, now I want to speak for five of, five of five. And we, we love our fire company. We love our EMS. We talk about core functions of the township. We know you are the key function. So I, I don't want you to think you're down the bottom of our list. If we could give you the money, we'd give it to you in a second. But then there's no doubt about you guys do a great job. We, we, we love you guys. So I just, I just want to be clear. So it's a big thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want it to be contentious and have you take any comments that I said, you know, the, the wrong way, but we understand. Um, we understand and it's the same in every township. We have a great relationship with Franklin. You have been a huge supporter of us. I look over at John next to me, but what we went through back in twenty thirteen to, with, with EMS funding, we were, we've done this before. This is, this is, and Franklin's been a partner with us. We understand that. We expect, just because John's in the audience now, uh, we know that this board is just as supportive. So we know that we're going to come to an agreement. Like I said before, you know, we choose to take an approach of, you know, working with our municipal partners and that's why I'm here. So we want to be on that same page. So by all means, um, you know, I would love to answer any further questions. Uh, Jeff has my phone number. John has my phone number. Please feel free to give me a call and we can have any discussions offline if you need as well. All right.
Just a quick one.
Yeah.
So.
No, take this, I, I really, I, I appreciate this, to be honest with you.
What do you think is the reason there's, uh, there's a diminishing volunteer, uh, staff?
Uh, I don't know if, you know, if you take a look at, um, the Avenue of Little League, any of the area churches, you go over to the Lions Club. Every single organization is, has decreasing volunteers, you know, the, the, the library over in West Grove. So I, I, you know, I don't know, it's just, I'm not a, a sociologist and I don't understand why in twenty twenty-five, we just don't have the numbers, but the numbers are sharply dropping as an industry. It's pretty well documented about volunteer firefighters across the Commonwealth. Um, we were holding our own here in West Grove for a long time and we're still, we still have a dedicated great group of volunteers. The unfortunate is, the unfortunate part is with volunteer firefighting specifically. If you move to Franklin Township and you're like, I don't think I'm going to get involved in the fire department and you already have a full-time job and a family and kids that play in sports. The likelihood that you're able to going to come, get the proper training within our building and then go to the fire academy for a semester and dedicate two evenings a week and every weekend for an entire semester. It's, it's very hard for the average person to do. So with standards now that are increased, so, and these are the very minimum standards. Um, it just makes it more difficult for the average person to fit it into their schedule. I, I think that's one of the biggest reasons. I don't think that there's. I, I think that's one of the biggest reasons. I don't think that there's less of a spirit of wanting to help your community. Cause you see, we have the, we had the, whoever mentioned the, the, the township day down here. This, that was a great affair. I mean, you saw how many people came out to help. People want to come out and help, right? But to come out and do volunteer firefighting is a little bit more difficult now with all the standards and the training that's required. And, you know, and then we tell you now, okay, well, the home response, you know, like when the pager goes off and you're sitting at your home and you come, we'll still have that, but now we want you to come and schedule four hours a night. You know, four hours a week, you know, and spend the, you know, four hours in the evening at the firehouse. Well, that, you know, is just very difficult to, to fit into the schedule. So I, I, I think it's, it's volunteerism in, in total. But then volunteer firefighting as an industry is really in a, in a tough spot right now.
Big commitment, yeah.
It is. It's a huge commitment. Anybody else? All right. Well, listen, I would love to stay for the discussion, but I do have to go to work. I have to be in Westchester at nine o'clock. So I'm going to head out. If you have any further questions, please feel free, reach out to us and we'll be happy to answer anything further. Thank you for your support. We appreciate you guys.
All right. So now for the next fun thing, 2026 budget discussion. Okay. Just a reminder that, um, we'll have a conversation today with the board. We'll go through it. I think Dave wants to go through it line by line, but we'll have, we'll have an in-depth discussion about the budget. And then we'll come back again, um, in November, um, with the, with the, with the budget to be advertised for the public to sit, look at it and comment on it on November 11. So, um, so like I said, this is a process and then it comes back on the November 19th, a board of supervisors meeting will look at it again based on public comments. And then if necessary, we'll do another bu- budget discussion in December with us adopting the budget, um, December 17th. So there's, this is like a process. So right now we're, we're going to start and do some in-depth discussions. Um, but like I said, we'll be back again and the public will have a chance to look at it November 11th.
And we, uh, yeah, so we, this is the same process we do every year. Um, the only difference this year is because it's an election year and we may have a new board. Uh, the new board members can ask to have the budget open reopened for discussion in January when they take their seats. So, um, the decisions that we make, and it makes sense for the reasons why. But this board, as it stands, will ratify the budget in December. And then, um, if there's issues or the, the budget needs to be reopened and re-discussed, uh, there's an opportunity again in January to do that. So with that, um, we had a discussion, uh, at our workshop meeting. Um, where we were at then was, uh, if you can remind me where we were about $165,000 underwater. Okay. And so at the time I had asked, um, Melissa to go through and try and reduce any, um, I don't know what they call it discretionary spending, but you know, where can we, uh, cut without, uh, cutting services uh, to our residents? And so I'm going to just kind of read through the, what has changed since the last discussion? And then I, what I'd like to do is just kind of go right through line by line and talk about each item. Okay? Um, and so this is, uh, might seem tedious, but you know, we talk about, um, one of, one of the, uh, things that Donna had mentioned during the, um, the fire and EMS discussion is this is the only time the four of us can get together and actually have a discussion uh, outside of an exec session and there's rules about exec session. So this will be the first time that, uh, or the second time the four of us, uh, are together to talk about the budget. So let's start with, um, what has changed since the workshop meeting? And then we'll just talk about, talk about it line by line. I can read, you want me to read it or I can, I'll read it. I'll read it. All right. So these are the following adjustments. So in the general fund, line 406 dot 331, uh, travel expense has been eliminated, uh, from the budget from two, uh, 2026. And that was, what was the original number for, for the travel budget? Remember? Oh, it's not a lot of money. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Um, one of the, one of the discussions we had, uh, for 2026 is looking at the newsletter. We have a printed newsletter. And that costs us $6,000, something like that this year, or $5,000, something like that this year. 4,000. I think. Yeah. And I think the idea here is, you know, we have websites, Facebook. Uh, we can push out the same newsletter digitally via email. Um, so we can talk about that. Again, these are all proposals. So these are not, um, final. It's just, these are what the staff has, uh, I asked them to do this and so the staff did it. Uh, we may not adopt all of these. Uh, meetings, conferences. So, um, we have a lot of municipal meetings that are, that are optional. Uh, PSAT is one of the major ones. Um, it's really good for, uh, when you're in a supervisor to go to a PSAT's meeting. We have originally allotted $2,500. We reduced that to $500. Uh, we have the grounds maintenance fee. Is that correct? Line 409 dot 371 decreased from $15,000 to $10,000.
It's not a fee, it's just to do maintenance.
Maintenance, right. Uh, and then line 409 dot 520, library funding, um, $10,000. Yeah, that's, that'll be a tough one. Uh, park and rec reduced by $20,000. Um, from the general fund, $40,000 for repairs, $20,000 for regular upkeep. And then from the general fund, the EMS fund, we propose to fund 10% from the number last year as adjusted in our budget. So I think the, we just had that conversation. Um, I've, we've been talking to the other municipalities after their board meetings and that's, number seems to be in line with what everybody is kind of agreeing to. Um, and that'll help West Grove think about what, what they need to do for their year.
And just, it's not a minor amount. It's still, it's still, I thought it was like 17,000 or it's still a $17,000 increase, but.
Our emergency ser-, uh, is it emergency service month? Is that what we're looking at? That's $347,000. Right? That's not a small amount of money. Um, I think our, uh, I think the only thing other than MS4, which is the biggest thing we'll be spending money on, it's, um, the road budget. Uh, but it's critical, like we can't not do that. So that's something that must be, must, we must have in our budget. So then we had, um, 404, uh, dot 310, legal services fees. Uh, sorry, Guy. Um, decreased from 45,000, uh, to $45,000 from $57,000 in, uh, 2026. Um, and so right now our spend to date is 37,366 dollars and 19 cents in legal services fee. Churchill Road. So this is a conversation I think we should have because it may not be something we necessarily just fund from the general fund. There might be some other financing options. So uh, funding partially from the general fund, $150,000 and reserve, and then removing money from the reserve fund if needed. Um, and then we can use our liquid fuels. Uh, this gets complicated, uh, because we also need liquid fuels to maintain our road systems. So when you come to, you know, after, come March, when we are out of our freeze thaw, usually we have a road, a road blows up. We call it a road blows up. So it looks like a very healthy road. And then after the freeze saw cycles, cycles of a, of a winter, uh, what you thought was a really good road, uh, now has a giant pothole in it and we need to fix it to the tune of $150,000. So, um, that's something that we, we expect every year. So even when we say, which we never have, but oh, we're not going to spend any money on the roads this year. We probably will. Um, then we have engineering fees, uh, $7,000. That's line 408 dot, uh, 310. And then Southview Estates, uh, this was, uh, $120,000 from the general fund. Uh, that was line 446 dot 100. And then line 408 dot 310, engineering fees of $3,000 for that. All right. And so, um, some other ideas. So I guess the question that I had, let me go back to Churchill Road. So Churchill Road is, I mean, it is the example of what can happen. Um, you know, we've done, uh, over the last six years, a pretty nice job tracking our road system. We used, uh, robotics uh, for, for that data analysis. Um, I think we still have links to the images that we generated from robotics. So it's basically generated a heat map of the township. You can look at your neighborhood and it gives you kind of a general idea of the road quality, uh, based on, uh, machine learning image analysis. And we did a really nice job upgrading most of our roads now. Um, they're all in pretty good shape. And then Churchill Road happens this year. We had a, a large storm and a very large washout. So we have, we have stabilized, uh, that road. But it's going to cost a significant amount of money to fix. Um, and so there's a lot of ways to do that. And one of the things that we've done with this budget is we've just reorganized everything to fund that project. And so one question that I have, and then we brought it up, uh, at the workshop meeting, was looking at financing that repair to take the pressure off this first year, right? And so we're not, so if we could look at that and see what, what's the possibility there?
Um, Dave, to be clear, the funding of that and the re, and the reconfiguration is for the temporary fix.
No, no, this, this.
This would be for the, this would be for the.
Yeah, the temporary is 22K.
Yeah, that's.
That's much, that's minor.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted.
Yeah, the temporary fixes.
We have no, we don't have any idea. This could be $40,000. We, we have no idea what it's going to cost. For the public, we have to rebuild an embankment. Isn't that what the issue is? It's.
It's close to a stream bed.
As close to a stream bed, which means you need permits and you have to work with, um, environmental folks. So it's.
It's not a simple fix. It's a, it's going to be an expensive and complicated repair. Um, relative to what we usually do in Franklin Township. Um, so we also, um, I guess you've made some kind of editorial notes here, just changing wording in some of the notes for the team, uh, DL and, and Churchill Road, um, and just fix them, fix them formula.
What, what, what I'd ask Melissa do when we as a board can decide whether we want to do that or not? We, liquid, liquid fuels is an interesting category, right? So we, we get about, um, 190K, $200,000 from, from Penn Dot for liquid fuels. But it's very, it can only be used on certain things. So it's very, it's very, it's very picky and it just, not that I wish anything bad, but it just so happens that Churchill Road is not necessarily a new road. It's really a stormwater issue. So, um, what I, what I asked, um, what I'm proposing to the board is that we, for the liquid fuels, um, we, we put 190,000 in the proposed expenditure column. Not that we're going to necessarily, we may not be able to spend it, but if, if there's anything that comes up that we can use the liquid fuels money for, like, like salt, like snow removal, um, like those barriers, or, or, I, I mean, whatever, whatever it is, engineering, um, to take it out of liquid fuels if we, if we can. I understand we still have to be prepared for a road to blow up. Right. And, and but, so whatever, so we'll use that money. I mean, we won't use it all for liquid fuels. We'll be snow and, and salt. But so there's still be money for roads to blow up. But if, if we need more, we'll have to go to the reserve fund. I mean, it's just, but if, but you like to, you like to spend the liquid fuels money if you can, um, because it is money that you have available for the, for the road. So, um, doesn't stop us from using money from the reserve fund if we, if we have to.
Well, and I think, you know, the reason that we have the reserve fund, um, is, is for these kinds of issues, right? So, um, I don't necessarily have a problem using that funds for this. But we're also under a lot of different kinds of financial pressure right now this, this year.
Well, yeah, just one more comment because you know, MS4 is like dear to my heart. So we, we, um, I always think of you with Big L, that MS4 is my Big L. And, um, we, we as a group have agreed to put $20,000 in the reserve fund every year for MS4. So the reserve fund is a reserve fund, but it's not necessarily money that's just kind of floating out there waiting to be pulled on. Um, we're, this, the day's going to come if we don't get grant money, that we're going to have to pull significant money out of the reserve fund to pay for MS4. And MS4 is not a minor thing. It's a million dollars plus.
It doesn't stop.
And, and, and it never ends. So, um, I don't want to scare anybody, but this is a, it, we don't have an extra $600,000 playing around. We, we, we will, you, and that's why you're talking about a loan, but we manage it. We'll manage it judiciously, but it's just like, I don't want anybody to think, oh, well, you got an extra $600,000 floating around. No, it doesn't work that way.
Well, I think that's a good point. And, and this is where, um, you know, I don't know if, uh, what's allowed in our accounting, um, but changing the term reserve fund, MS4 fund might be the more appropriate, um, because when we started this, when we started the reserve fund, um, we, we created it specifically to deal with financial emergencies, right? Big problems that blow up. And, um, and then we had this, had the MS4 become our financial emergency.
Right.
Um, and so right now what we're spending money on with MS4 is mostly engineering, um, and mostly reporting out to, uh, DEP. And, uh, eventually we're going to start our projects and, um, and that's going to come from this MS4 fund that we have currently labeled reserve fund, which is why it's currently related, uh, labeled reserve fund because initially that was the idea. So, um, okay, where were we? Yeah. So I think it's important just to kind of give us some options to choose from, right? Options A, B, and C uh, around the dealing with the Churchill Road repair. I think Jeff, we had some preliminary conversations with the engineering group. And they were giving us some pretty startling numbers. Maybe you can remind me of what some of those were.
I, I would agree with you. Um, it, uh, you know, uh, again, this is going to be a wide range and not to be held at what I'm saying, but it could be three to $400,000, could be, might be.
Yeah.
One thing they said was that, that just the permitting is about a hundred thousand.
That's.
Alone. And it's, and a long wait too. It's not like a, a few months. So like for these six or nine months before we can get the permit.
The, the, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, the, the other thing is we are looking for grant opportunities as well for Churchill Road. So Panoni and I are, are working on that. Um, once we have more information, we'll bring it to the appropriate workshop meeting or next board meeting.
Yeah. So, um, we'll have our November workshop meeting and we'll have our November board meeting. Um, but by the November board meeting, we have to have some options to, to, to talk about it.
You could just, you can just, I mean, the nice thing about the budget, if you think you might spend it out of the reserve fund, like you may not, but if you think you might, you just put it there. If you don't, you don't have to spend it. You just put it, you just say you're going to take $300,000 out of your proposed expenditures. If you don't spend it, it sits there and you carry it over to the following year.
Uh, yeah, I understand. I understand that. But I'd like to, you know, I'd like to make this, um, take some of the pressure off of this budget. And if we can do that through some creative, uh, ways, whether we're financing or we find some grants um, to repair that road, that would be helpful.
Yeah, you won't know about the grants on time.
No.
You won't know about.
We might know that they exist though, right? We, we'll, we'll find them. Just give us some options. All right. So anything else on the, on the top line items before we start, uh, digging into some of the details here? So I'm on the first page, uh, general fund. So looking at expenses, I'm just going to focus on, on, on our expenses here. This is, uh, just a question that I, uh, I think we can't actually change this. But it says elected official wages. So, um, we all, uh, get paid, I think 50 bucks a meeting, something like that. We, I get something like that, right?
Meeting? No.
146 a quarter.
A quarter, 146. Yeah, we used to have, well, now we have double meetings. So 25 bucks a meeting. We now, we now have six meetings. So, but that all, so we all get paid this kingly sum, but it all adds up to about $3,500 a year.
I give it back.
Can we, can we not? Do we, do we have to have that in our budget? Does that, is there a? Let's not, let's just get rid of it. If you don't have to, if the elected officials don't need wages, I don't, you know, why not have it? That's another $3,500. Um, and then we're going to talk in exec, exec session about our proposals for, um, our admin salaries. With just the board members. So I'll, I'll, we'll table that and that'll all become public, um, next, next month. Um, so then we have legal services in the township. Uh, current year to date is 34,000. Um, it looks like we're projected for 40,000. It looks like we're projected for 40,000. And for 2026, we're asking 45,000. And that's a reduced, reduction of about $12,000. When you look at this line item, what are the kinds of things that we may anticipate or miss that we're going to be, as a result of this reduction?
For just the legal services?
Yes, for legal services. Is there any? We're, we're underspending now anyway, right? We're, we don't, we don't anticipate 40, to spend $45,000 this year. We anticipate to spend $40,000. So maybe we're not going to miss anything, right?
Hopefully not. I'm pretty on top of everything.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't go any lower though. I'd go with the 45. And like I said, if you don't spend it, you don't spend it. But.
Right.
We still have Lexington Point, getting that up and running. I, I, I don't know what guy will have on his, what we do with that. And who knows with MS4s, there are going to be stuff that we got to get guy involved with. I, I, I don't, I don't know what I don't know.
Right. Well, I think it's, so I guess the. Okay, alright. But if our run rate's 40, then 45 for 2026 makes sense, just in case there's something that props up. But it's still less than what we budgeted last year. That's good. Alright, so there was another. We also were talking about the zoning officer. Where is that? Is that on this first page?
Second page. Where he starts. 414-310-B.
Okay.
Okay.
There it is. Okay. And so that is a reduction of.
I didn't reduce it yet.
Okay.
Is that because of?
So I took, I took 10,000 from the top line item to add to the bottom line item. But our zoning officer has doubled in the past two years.
I was just going to mention that. What happened? So last year, so 2025, it was $35,000. For, for the budget. And now it's projected to be $75,000. What happened?
So when I started seeing the uptick in time sheets and what he was submitting to the township for billing, Jeff and I both started really timekeeping his time. Part of that goes to Lexington Point because he's receiving all those permits coming in and he has all the other inspections for Lexington Point. So he's back and forth a lot. So there's a little increase there. And you also see that coming back into the general fund for the building permits. But with Lexington Point, there's only eight houses left. So hopefully, and with time management and I think Jeff and I are going to be discussing this with Mark to reduce his time.
So thinking, when I think about this, you know, we have fees for all of this. Are we, and the goal for these fees, so we're, we're not, you know, we're a municipality, we're not allowed to profit off of these things. Are we not charging enough for our fees to cover this cost of the zoning?
About 12%. With other townships, Jeff tasked Stacy with doing the comparison charge. So in the organizational meeting, you'll have a new fee schedule. Coming out that we're proposing.
We, we're at 12% of what other townships are, or?
Within 12.
We're within 12. Is there, are those other townships also underwater on their zoning costs?
No.
Okay.
So I mean, in 2024, we.
We have Lexington Point, so that's.
That's, that's what's, that's what's taking its time.
Yes.
So he might, this might be a blip.
If you go back to the first page, you can see building permits. And it was scheduled, it used to be 55, it's up to 85. So, so that's your income. That, that actually has gone up. The 80, it's 85K where you, we used to budget 55. So, so just to give you a sense, I'm, I'm not saying there may be a possibility that we could cut back a little bit on the zoning, the zoning person. But we are getting additional money in the, in the permits.
So, yeah, I mean, we, we, I mean, it's one of the key functions of the township is to make sure that, yeah. It's really about, are we, do we have the right fee schedule to fund the zoning that we need to, we need to do as a township?
Sorry. So, so I would ask both Melissa and Jeff, do you think based on better, so I'm not talking about fees now, but more about better time management? Do you think we get that from 75 down to maybe 70? Like, would you be comfortable with that or?
My goal is to get it down back around 50,000. And I want to restrain his time of being here and going back to, just the Tuesday and Thursday as LTL was.
So what would you be comfortable putting in the budget?
Um, my plan is to talk to Mark tomorrow or the following.
And then give us a number?
Have the conversation with the board first.
And so we, we would like to reduce it if we can. Maybe, can you come back to us? Is that, is that all right with you?
I think that's, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah.
50. That's.
That would be nice.
Time to get.
I, I, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, but if we can save 25 here, maybe we can relook at the, the library when we get to the library. But if we could, if we could save 15, we could save something.
And Donna, is there, there's a correlation to the fees, permit fees maybe? So does that go down to?
I think the thing is that you have, the amount of work is one thing, right?
Yeah.
And so that makes sense why it's more than the 35,000 we would have had years ago.
Right.
But is, is, is this focus, is this time management as good as it could be? So that. Yeah. So you guys are all managers. You know how it is. Some, some, maybe they talk a little bit too much. Maybe it just, it's more complicated. It's a more, I, I think, I think the fees, I think the work can stay the same. Let's assume that. It's just about having him be more focused.
And maybe he can be more efficient.
Exactly. Right, right. And that's the conversation you're going to have to have with them. And then tell us, would you be comfortable with reducing? Okay.
May, may I ask a question of Melissa? Melissa, in doing the numbers for professional fees, are you taking into account or, or, or are you going to be taking to, taking into account the reimbursables and how that affects the, you know, the, the total out of pocket for those budget items for the township?
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
So all his services, I am able to, anything I can build back with our escrow, I build back, bill it back and have the individual taxpayer pay the township back.
Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry for, for those listening at home. So I, I think, I think having an idea of what we can do, if we can do an electronic newsletter, we have a lot of outreach. We have Facebook. We have our email system where we can email updates. If we can do that.
We have a website.
We have a website. We have all kinds of access, places to access our, our information. We also might be able to do more. You know, have these newsletters more often pushed out with more timely information. Maybe be more creative because it's all going to be electronic. Yeah. You know, it was something that was important to me because I wanted to be able to have good information that was useful to the people. So, and I don't want to get, lose that, right? And so how do we keep it going? So I think maybe having a plan to say, okay, well, if we don't do a print one, what does an electronic newsletter look like? What kind of information can we do more timely? And that doesn't really, I mean, it costs, it does cost something, like we're, we'll all be participating and creating it. But the post is just going up and up and, and the cost of printing is going up and up. And so, and this is just twice a year. It's $4,000 for twice, twice a year. It's, that's a pretty significant amount of money. So let's think about what a different way of communicating all of this information. And maybe we can come up with some better, better, better alternatives. So, okay.
So, so are we going to agree to try it for a year?
We're not making any decisions tonight.
Oh, we're not making any decisions?
We're just talking about the budget. Next year, next, 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 next month is when we actually vote on the budget.
Well, because we had to put, okay, and then we put it out to the people.
Yes.
Okay, I got it. Got it.
We're not, this is.
Got it. I got it.
This is all hypothetical. I mean, it's not hypothetical, but it's all on. So this is going to go out to, yes, this is going to go out for public comment. People can respond. And then we'll come back and say, so in November, we're going to get other options, right? So we're going to have.
Well, you should go out to the public with your budget.
That's what we're going to do.
Not, not, no, with the answer. So if you weren't going to put $4,000 in.
Oh, no, this is going, this will be going to zero, right? But we haven't, we're not ratifying the.
Right. So then you are making it, we are, not a decision, but you're saying there's a proposal on table to make it.
The proposal is on the table to make it zero.
Next time we see this budget, this will be zero.
Yeah, but we have to think about it because it has to be, there's going to be some time, right? That's a non-zero number to pay for the, even electronic version, right? So. Yeah. We have to, we have to have something there.
So put in, okay, you'll put, we'll put a number in for the next version of the budget, but it won't be $4,000.
Yeah. So I think the thought, that if the, if the thought is let's do something electronically, push it out to people, then, but it's not a non, that's not going to be a zero, I don't think, because it, it does, you know. Yeah, right. Okay. So then, let's go back. I'm having, my eyes are going crossed here. What line item is this? Alright, so this is the admins, meeting and conference number that we talked about. Initially, it was $2,500, reduced to $500. And just for, just for kind of clarification, in 2024, we had a meeting and conferences budget of $2,500 and we spent a little over $700. 25, in 2025, we had a budget of $2,500 and we, we spent $132. And we don't anticipate spending anymore. And so reducing it to $500 seems appropriate. However, I'm going to just, I will say this. There is, you know, one of the important kind of, and I don't know if this is free or not. I don't know if it is. The PSAS training costs something and the township reimburses supervisors for that PSAS training. And that's kind of a critical event for particularly new supervisors to attend. Because it tells you all the things you can and can't do as a supervisor. You get to talk to other supervisors. It's very important to attend. So that costs something. So again, to Donna's point, just because you allocate money for something, it doesn't mean you're spending it. There will likely be a new supervisor on the board. And they're going to, they should attend this PSAS training, right?
What's that cost?
So I think that has to be, that has to be in here. Whether they, whether we use it or not, that has to be thought of because we're going to have a, we're going to have one or two new supervisors.
Okay.
They do offer it online for, where you can connect. That's, I did reach out to PSAS for that.
I think it's important to, one of the most important things is that you just, you're networking with other supervisors. You get to, you know. So I think, let's just see what it is. And again, it's, we're making a line item and it, and we may not spend it. So, but it's, we need to think about that as a township. Okay. So then we have, this is blue line. Vehicle fuel. I mean, that is what it is. I'm impressed. I mean, it's been the same budget number for the last three years and it's only gotten more expensive. So good job not driving too much. Let's see here. You know what? I'm going to do this. Yeah. Alright, so gra, so grounds maintenance, in 2024, we budgeted $20,000. In 2025, it was $15,000 and then we're going to be budgeting 10 in 2026. I have a feeling a lot of that is just due to, we lost Jeff. A lot of that is due to the volunteers that we're getting, right? People are doing more. Well, this is just grounds. Okay. And so that's just mowing and what else is, what else is required? Okay.
Salt shed, the storage area internally in here.
So from 20, now I guess for, however, I will, this is interesting. So just for comparison, we budgeted in 2024, $20,000. We audited, we spent three, a little over $3,000. In 2025, we budgeted $15,000. And year to date projected is $6,000. So actually why, so year to date is $2,000 and it's projected six. We're projected to spend twice what we spent in 2024 and 2025. Is that fuel cost? Is that, what's, why is that?
Some of, some, some of that expense is cleaning out the offices here that's picking up in here. I just put it on the ground maintenance because we had the extra.
That outside.
Oh, I see. Okay. So in 2026, we don't anticipate doing that again. But you anticipate it going back to the, so our run rate, let's just say, looking back 2023, 2024, and then 2025 without the shed clean, the, the cold storage clean out, et cetera. Our run rate's about $3,000.
Correct. And that also includes salt pushback, what about salt shed?
Yeah, a little over three.
Yeah, it's like 33, 3300, something like that.
So you want to make it.
I'd say five.
Yeah, I'd just say why, why 10?
Could you, could you live with five, you think?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Alright, so let's make that five.
Just say 5,000 tops.
Okay. My sense to me. Building repair and maintenance. So this is one of those tricky ones because you never know when something, something really blows up. But we've budgeted consistently 11, 11.5, alright, $11,000, $11,500. And then, well, yeah, and then we consistently spend more, right? So.
The generator.
Yeah. So was it last meeting, we talked about this building is very old and is, needs a constant, constant repair. And we're doing some things to shore up and improve that environment. But is $11,000 realistic? So what's interesting is in 2023, we spent $2,000. In 2024, the audit actuals was $21,000. And that was the generator, right? The.
Generator was this year.
That was this year. Okay. But that wasn't a bigger hit. This was, so what was 2024? I mean, I know it's old news, but I don't know if you're. We went for, we went from 11, so we budgeted 11,000, we spent 21. Year to date now, we budgeted 11,000 and we were at 13,000 and we don't anticipate spending anymore. And then we're budgeting 11.5 again. So it, you know, if you average it out over these last five years, it's probably close. Because we have these one-time costs at, you know, every property owner. So I guess I'm thinking, I was, you know, it's, this one's a little tricky. Do we just leave it there? Okay. Fire relief distribution hasn't changed.
That comes in, that comes in and goes out, right? Yeah, it's not, it's like, it's, it's, it's zero. I mean, for us, what's, yeah, that's zero. So.
PA UCC fees. These are standard fees. And so it's interesting, why, they went from 750 to 4,000? What happened there?
They were 4,000 in 23.
And now they're 4,000. So.
Just, so when it comes down to the PA UCC fees and like the zoning stuff, I'm trying to get the word of how things were accounted for. I'm trying to get the word of how things were accounted for in the past. And I'm trying to bring it into the future where like our zoning officer is one fee. Our inspector, inspectors, one fee, the UCC fees, but I can't let it drop off the budget per. The standard because there's money spent. So that's.
Historical.
Historical data.
So we expect another 4,000 this year.
Right.
Okay.
So planning general. So that's zero. And, um, with, so. In 2025, we had $10,000 in planning general and we spent 1,000. What was the? You know, and then the, in 2024, we had $15,000 in planning general and spent 479. What's, what's happening there?
Um, so that's the old accounting system and then we're becoming accustomed to the new way of how it's built.
Okay. Okay. Cause you, you've. Cause you've broken out a lot of our, a lot of our fees into separate line items where previously it was all dumped into this one, one file. Okay. So is the thought that we would just eliminate this line item in the future?
Yeah.
Okay. Ah, right. Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. So then zoning, planning, general, we already talked about that. This also might be as we go into 2026, we might be able to work on this because there's only eight more houses for Lexington Point.
Yeah, we asked, we'll sort of come back with a number in November that based on time management.
Yep.
What she thinks she can, even if she, even if you can take 10,000 off, that would be, that would be big.
Okay. Planning services, ord, I'm not sure what that means. Okay. Oh, yeah. All right. So this is. To fund any new ordinances or resolutions that we put into the, into this book. Okay. Yeah. And we usually spend around between three and $5,000 to get a, an ordinance written. Um, and published. So that requires, so does this include the writing of the ordinance? The publishing of the, advertising of the ordinance?
Take them with that as the legal services if needed.
Okay.
And recording fees.
And we don't always spend the $12,000, but we need that. So we did one ordinance. So we did, how many ordinance, two ordinances last year?
We did solar, right?
It's solar. Okay. We did solar.
We redid the pro. I don't know if that was a whole big deal, but.
Well, that required, um, advertisement to re, to rewrite that. Okay. But let's leave, I mean, we can leave it at 12,000. I mean, but I don't anticipate us writing a whole bunch of ordinances next year, but.
Maybe do 10.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 again, it bounces around, right? You know, who knows? And then again, to, we may not have to spend it. All right. So zoning, building inspections. So this one is interesting. This doesn't, so in, is this in 2024? $50,000 was budgeted and then we spent $101,000. Is that like a Lexington Point, they put up a bunch of houses? What was, what's, what was the, the cost there?
They are entered to lay up and all his charges.
Is that MS four?
Uh, that was the initial MS four charges?
Yeah, the initial.
Okay. So why is that under zone? Oh, because it's zone, it was under zoning and as far as you're.
Yeah.
Clocking and under zoning. Okay. Okay. So I don't know if that makes sense to. Create a separate line item just for MS four related costs.
That's where they're the place I could dump it back then.
No, I know. I, I, I understand. I understand what you, why you did it. But, um, just for clarity.
Should.
I think we need to.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a, uh, it's, I mean, the, the MS four costs are kind of like our road program. It's a yearly cost to the township. We should have it reflected in the budget. Um, just for clarity sake, so if you, you know, because if we're spreading it out, right, like we are now. Engineering costs, report, writing reports, you know, all of these things. It's better to just have everything under. One, if that's, if that's makes sense to you as a, our account, okay. All right. Zoning hearing board. Um, and I guess that just depends on how much you, how often you need them.
It's just a place.
And it's, and it's five, $5,000 is allotted. 2024, we spent it. Um, this year, we're not going to spend it all. So that's good. And we'll just keep it at five because it's, uh, it's just as, and as needed. Um, emergency service coordinator wages, that's, uh, $1,500 and that's been, that's been consistent. Animal control. So that has gone up. So we, in 2023, we spent $8,000 on animal control. We budgeted in 2024, we budgeted $2,500 and we spent it. And in 2025, we budgeted $2,500 and spent seven, uh, $7,300, almost $7,400. And we're projected to spend $7,600. So, um, this is deer and the roads and mostly.
If we have a dog.
Okay.
Have to meet a minimum.
Okay.
You don't pay per dog if they pick up.
Well, you still pay per dog, but there's a minimum to have them, um, sorry.
There's a minimum to have them on the back burner. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what you're saying. We had to sign a contract.
Okay. So that's $7,500 and that's, uh, I mean, that's what we spent last year, right? Basically. Okay. Uh, hazmat collection is $1,500. Let's see, let's go down to another kind of a large item. Engineering services roads. So that's, um. That's Ron Reagan's. D. Is that what engineering services roads is?
Correct.
Okay. And that's flat pretty much. Well, let's see. In 2024, we only spent $14,000. So we have budgeted $25,000. In 2024, we spent 15. In 2025, uh, we have 25,000 budgeted, but I don't, there's no. No dollar spent. Did we not use any?
No, because I was able to get that covered under liquid fuels and use the capital fund where we have allotted money for Ron. So.
And so this year for, um, where we're budgeting $25,000 again. Primarily because we're going to be using those funds for.
Right.
For Churchill perhaps. Okay. Okay. Makes sense.
Except if we can use liquid fuel, we try to, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely will.
I think the, I think the thought there is, um. If we don't, if we don't fund it versus, um, you know, with financing the project or something like that. Uh, winter maintenance materials, um, is that something? So this is, is that just salt?
Just salt.
Okay. So in, uh, so this is entirely dependent on the winner we have. Um, so in 2024, it was budgeted $60,000 for salt. And then in, we spent 36,000, $37,000. And then 2025, we budgeted $60,000 again. Um, and year to date, we spent $64,000. So we went a little over what we budgeted. And now you're suggesting, um, using liquid fuels for the salt. Your reasoning is because we would use, uh, the normal winter maintenance. Money for Churchill.
Correct.
Okay.
Just raise.
And the reason for that is liquid fuels, uh, funding is very particular about what you can and can't do. And this is just something, an easier way to finance. So this might change. In November, if we decide to say finance it through, uh, or, okay.
You still use, why wouldn't you still use it? Why would you still use, put liquid fuels out of, sold out of liquid fuels? I don't see any downside to doing that.
It'd be the first cut.
That might, that might be, that might be. But I think it's, I think we want to make sure that everything's still rationalized through. Because if we're, all of this is based on 100% is coming out of the existing budget. Without any modification through either grants or financing to do Churchill.
Right. But so, but regardless, I'm still confused, right? So. So, so you're saying, so if liquid fuel, that's, so.
Because we need to do a road program, right? So if we need.
Usually.
So if we, if we have, if we come up and need $150,000 for a road, we're going to need to use that liquid fuels money to do the 150.
Right. Or, or you, or you've, so you, we'll see if you can do, so you would only, I, well, we'll have to talk about this, but I would only see us doing a road program if we have to. Because you don't have the money.
No, I, I understand.
Right. So what?
But you have to anticipate.
So that's why, but liquid, as we said, liquid fuel money can only be used for certain things. So if you have those certain things like salt. Let liquid fuels be used for it. If you have to fix a road and no, and now, now you don't have enough liquid fuels money, then you just take it out of the general fund. But at least you've used the liquid fuels money as it's intended. You see what I'm saying? It's still, it's still, it's, it's still, it's all our money, but liquid fuels is so particular.
No, I understand.
If you can check the box, use it and know that if a road has to blow up, we got, we got to get the money. It's going to be general fund. It's going to be capital fund. It's going to be reserve fund if we have to. Right.
Uh, so then we got contract snow removal. Um, so this is interesting. So snow removal is one of those things that again, it's, it, how much you spend depends on, uh, your year. So. 2023, great year. We only had to spend $9,000 in snow removal. Um, let's do it again. Um, that's the plan. We'll, we're not going to get any snow. Uh, so 2024, uh, we, so we budgeted about the same amount of money. Every year, $200,000. 2024, we spent $73,000 in, in snow removal. So that's plows. In 2025, we budgeted 200, 200,000 dollars and it looks like we're going to spend about again, another $75,000. Um, and we've had this conversation every year.
The extra for the roads.
And then we use, and right, and so the, the point with this is we understand that. So $200,000 is if we have one of those years where we just get a tremendous amount of snow. And, um, we need, we need the money. What we generally do is transfer out of this fund at the end of the year to help pay for our road programs. So last year, we transferred about $100,000 out of the, out of the plowing budget. Um, into our road program. So I'm okay leaving, leaving it at 200,000. Because it functionally doesn't change anything with the bottom line budget. Because it's, that money is definitely will be spent on a road project somewhere. Yeah. Um, because I, I mean, I don't think I've been here. For the last six years, I don't think we've ever had a year where we didn't have an unexpected road problem. Um, you know, so.
Jeff already has a list in his head, thinks he wants to fix.
I know Auburn's on your list.
And so then we've got street lighting, um, that is what it is. But, uh, when you look at the budget line item. In 2023, we spent six, $16,000 on street lights, budgeted, uh, and then in 2020. This is, okay, this is a little funny. So in 2024, we budgeted $15,000, but we spent $8,000. In 15, in 2025, this year.
I think you're looking at the wrong line.
Yeah.
Am I?
You're looking at guardrails. You're looking at guardrails.
Oh, guardrails. Okay. Sorry. I am looking at.
The lineup.
Street lighting, electricity. There we go. Oh, there we go. That makes sense. All right. So this, there's a missing line between street lighting and guardrails. Okay. Um, so we're, but so we spent, uh, we spent about $2,000 a year on lighting. Okay. Um, and then guardrails is kind of opportunistic, right? You only replace guardrails when you need to. So it, the budget goes up and down. You know, $16,000 in 2023, this is, these are the actuals. 16 in 2023, eight in 2024. And then 19 in 2025 in guardrails. And so I guess we just kind of even out that curve. With 15,000 to make that sense. So there's no, so we, if we don't replace a guardrail. We just, that 15,000 goes back into the general fund.
Right.
Okay. But because it's opportunistic, it's hard to, to remove it. Um, township mowing. It's, what we budget is in line with basically what we spend. So we budget $15,000 for township office mowing. And, um, we spend about 13, between 12 and 13,000 dollars in, in mowing the township office. Uh, how does that relate to? The other line item, the, um, I don't remember what the line, you probably. Yeah, the office maintenance, which I think is also ground, yeah, grounds.
409371.
So the grounds of.
409371 is grounds maintenance and we have 15. 2015, we're going down to 5,000.
So the difference is with the, uh, office mowing that we put that out the bid. So that's a fixed expense. The grounds maintenance is anything outside for like the, uh, stone, the pushback.
Oh, I see. Okay. So it's not falling, everything but mowing.
Everything but mowing.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So then we're moving down to roadside mowing. Um, roadside mowing is, this is a, a, a very big expense and it got much more expensive because regulations have changed on. And for, and this is not a bad thing. The regulations have changed. So rather than just having one roadside mower. You now have lag, uh, safety to help, uh, guide traffic around these modes. And so. These are safety improvements. So I can't argue with that for sure. Um, so you have the mower and then you have a lag vehicle to help divert traffic. So.
No, this is the worst case. That's what she has in the below.
So yes, that's kind of where I'm at is so between 2023, 2024 and 2025. So 20, let's just start with 2024. $44,000, we budgeted 70, 69,9. Um, we budgeted 74,000 in, um, 2025. And then we're budgeting the same amount again in 2026. So. Yeah. How much of, go ahead.
The actual is going towards the budget.
Yes. So over the last two years, we went from spending 41 to 44. To now we're, we're projected to spend $60,000 in roadside mowing. So between 2024, um, Jeff, and 2025, what we're projected, that's a, let's say $15,000. Increase in roadside mowing has, is this, what's that increase associated with? That's not just, that's, we've already done the safety increase, which brought it to the 40,000, I think. So what's happening there?
What we're doing is we're, we're trying to do more of what we call a super elevated cut for the larger trucks. And also for the farm equipment going through as well.
Can you describe for me what a super elevated cut means?
High up.
So higher up on the.
High up. So when you get rain or snow, when the branches sag, they're not hitting the tractors.
Oh, I see. Okay. So it's not just mowing, it's tree trimming.
Yes.
Okay. So, um. Okay.
Roadside mowing, mowing elevated cut, super elevated cut.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. Okay. So it's roadside mowing and tree trimming is, is what counts for the 74,000. And then we have tree removal. We're constantly removing trees. I don't anticipate that, um, changing. Uh, so going back to the roadside mowing, is this, you know, is there, is there any space to optimize that? Or is this something that is, you know, regulations and it is what it is?
I feel for now, it, it is what it is. It is something that we bid out each year.
Right. All right. Road line striping. Um, this is again, we have in 2025, we budgeted. $14,000. We haven't spent any money and we're not spending, we're, we're, we don't anticipate any road striping this year. Top coat.
So even with the new roads, we did new roads this year, right? We didn't stripe anything? We did, we did not. The only thing that we really had to do was the upper portion of Auburn. And figured that we could wait till next year or the year after, till we have more, because we get more of a discount, the more that we have.
It makes sense. Thanks.
Yeah. All right. So garbage removal. I think we definitely want to remove our garbage and that's been consistent over the years. All right. So storm damage and maintenance repairs. Uh, we budget 165,000. Uh, we budget a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year. We've been budgeting it the same uh, from twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and you're asking for the same amount this year. Um, it looks like, again, this must be a, well, this is a contingent on the kind of year we have. Um, and so in twenty twenty-three, we only spent eighty-six thousand dollars in, in storm damage, maintenance and repairs. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, we spent a hundred and twenty-four thousand. In twenty twenty-five, it looks like we're projected to spend a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, it's been a pretty interesting year when it comes to storm damage. When you talk about storm damage, um, with this line item, are we talking about storm damage? What are we talking about? What line, what are, what are we repairing?
It could be potholes, um, tar and chipping or what's that called? Where are they?
Line striping?
Not line striping. The crack ceiling. Um, anything that falls in that category that just happens within the township roads.
Okay. This is not like a, a road, major road damage, like I'm going to say Churchill Road. This does, this is not a storm damage item. That's a different item.
Yeah.
Where's the temporary uh, fix going Churchill? Is that this line?
No, it'll be, we'll get down. Yeah, we'll get to it.
Okay.
Which one, the twenty-two K? There's some effect.
Yeah, it's below.
Okay. All right. So then we go to storm water management. That's uh, line four four six dot uh, three ten. Um, so this, so again, let's, let's kind of remind ourselves. We spent eighty-eight thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. We budgeted three hundred fifty thousand dollars for storm water management in twenty twenty-four. Um, and then spent sixty-four thousand. And then budget, and then twenty twenty-five, a hundred thousand dollars, and we're going to spend about a hundred and thirty-five this year. And then in twenty twenty-six, uh, you're asking for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Projects associated with that, Southview Estates.
So the Southview Estates looks like it's going to be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So this, so this uh, storm water management is um, project based. So it's not opportunistic. It's based on the projects we decide to do within that year. And so uh, we must, so when we look at um, the hundred eighty thousand dollars, it is specifically for Southview Estates, which is going to be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to repair. And then sixty thousand dollars in maintenance. Is that sixty thousand dollars in maintenance ongoing every year? We're going to be spending sixty thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's for the inlet inspections, any culvert pipes that have to be taken care of.
So does this become like a second, like another line item that we have to have to talk about this particular infrastructure piece? Or do we just keep it under a general storm water? You know, where does it go? So since it's a maintenance cost, let me reframe, rephrase my question. Since this storm water management piece becomes a um, ongoing maintenance issue and not a project specific line item. Do we put that somewhere else? Because we, you know, to the, to my point is, we, we, we budget for projects we anticipate doing, not necessarily as maintenance items. Does it go somewhere?
But you can have a pipe blow up, right?
Right, that's what.
So what, yeah, what is maintenance with storm water when um, some, a pipe just corrodes and you have to fix it? So it's.
Think that's Dave's point. We think that under maintenance uh, or
Right.
maintenance and repairs, but um, but any project should be separately uh, voted and budgeted and tracked.
So may, so sixty, sixty thousand dollars is a, like I'm thinking it, it's a fee we pay every year in perpetuity. Not in, in, in anticipation of problems. Is that my, is my understanding correct for this project?
It's no, I don't get.
No, no, I thought that was the opposite.
Yeah, yeah. Because we, we're not going to have, we're not going to have a Southview Estates every, every year. We have Southview Estates for.
So here's what I'm saying, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
That's a project.
That's the project. Then it's sixty thousand dollars in maintenance.
Yeah, that's, that's like uh, what, what Melissa said. That's like
Culver pipes.
Culver pipes, uh, review.
Oh, it's not associated with Southview Estates.
No.
These are just other items. Okay. All right, all right. That's where I, that's my miss.
So one before that, storm damage is a big storm and now I gotta fix something.
I understand now. I thought, I, it's my.
Inspections in there, the inspections.
I read the line item that you, we do the project and then we have to spend sixty thousand dollars. Okay. Nope, that makes sense. I know, I understand it now. That's why we're doing this. Um.
So we're going to separate the two?
No, I think I, I.
Keep it right in there.
So I think we keep it in there because it, it's still in line with how we handle that budget, right? Um, so then the harbor, we have no change in the harbor. Um, park employee wages, that's been, that's fairly flat year over year. I think we're, we're going from seventeen thousand uh, to nineteen-five. Um, park supplies, five hundred dollars. Do we only, really only spend five hundred dollars on park supplies? What does that entail? Okay. It's, well, yes, uh, because I think it's, you know, we. Yeah. Uh, and then culture, historical harbor, um, we budgeted twenty-five, in twenty twenty-five, a thousand dollars and we're budgeting it again in twenty twenty-six. But this is, is this a typo or is this, did we? So in twenty twenty-four, five thousand dollars, we spent five thousand dollars. In twenty twenty-five, a thousand dollars, we spent five thousand dollars. Is that accurate?
Yes, but what I didn't know what was coming in was the agreement with women written township for um, the collectivity plan. So that bill just showed up.
Okay, right, right.
Pass that just came in.
So these are one, one-shot items. Okay. So a thousand dollars, the reason I bring it up is a thousand dollars appropriate. Okay.
Then pops up from we're tied out.
Yeah, well, it shouldn't pop up. We should.
Yeah, I mean, that's discretion. I mean, that's.
Sure, as a boy to prove it and then let you know.
Yeah, because I think.
Activity then popped up. There was a agreement made before my.
Right, right. That's the problem. It's, it's a lag, right?
Yeah, yeah. We're catching up. But uh, yeah, because that's, again, that's, you know, what I would think is discretionary, right? Um, so then contributions to libraries, um.
This, this is a tough one.
Yeah, so uh, I don't like this one. Um, so, hey, look. We took, maybe we do this. Just to bring the library back. I would rather, so we gave, we, we're not taking a salary. Right? That's three thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. And if we go back and put that and give that to the libraries, which I think would be appropriate, because that one is like you, I don't, I don't like that. Then we can get that number back to close to twenty thousand dollars.
Is, is there? Is, I mean, I.
I mean, we're.
Get it back to, not that we give them a three percent increase, but we give them a twenty-four seven. Is there a way that we can? Like, I don't know what you, I don't know. Maybe I'm asking too much. I, I, I agree with the thirty-five hundred. I don't, you know, you go back here. Um, just, they've done so, it's just.
I'm, no, I'm, this, this is one of those ones I don't want to touch.
Like, if there's a, if, if there's a way we could keep it the same and explain to them, you know, we just can't give you any more, but we just killing us to get, we need seven thousand dollars, seventy-five, or fifty-five hundred dollars more.
Yep. So you put our salaries into the, into the library.
And maybe would you get back from the permit guy? I don't know.
He has a name, Donna.
I don't know. I just, it's, can we think about this one?
Yeah, I think we should.
It's a sixty-five, I mean, you saved on the newsletter. Well, how much?
That's another four.
Okay, we're so, we're so close.
Well, I mean, we reduced grounds maintenance five thousand too.
Yeah, so we got it.
Think we can do this, Melissa, everyone? I like to just keep, and even then it's going to be hard for them to tell them that we're not giving them any more, but I, what they've done across some park with that reading program and the, the, just they've gone.
Yeah, I, a hundred percent. It's not, I, I, it's, you know, when, you know, when, 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 the woman spoke at the beginning, I, I, I forget her name. But she grabbed a really good point about building community. And that library, that twenty-four thousand dollars is really all about building community. So let's, let's, we got there today, I think.
Okay, good.
Let's bring that back up to twenty twenty-five levels. All right. Um, so then we have social security employee. We can't touch social security. We'd get in really big trouble. Uh, unemployment compensation, we can't, that's not something we need to deal with. Workers' compensation insurance. Can't, and we have, this is all insurance, which really is like, we can't do anything about any of that. Uh, so then this is where it gets kind of interesting. So um, every year, so we have, um, we spend, I don't know the exact number, about two hundred plus thousand dollars on open space every year. Um, there is um, an open space tax that we have and that's not enough to cover our open space expenses. So there's a line item here, uh, that transfers four hundred ninety, uh, it's line four nine two dot oh four oh. We transfer seventy-eight thousand dollars um, in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Uh, we transferred ninety-three thousand dollars. Now here's my question is.
Hopkins.
Oh, okay.
See, I don't know if the public knows this, but um, we, we were, we were able to preserve almost a hundred, hundred acres. And because of the great work that Jeff's done with Jeff Shellington, um, it didn't cost us a dime. And I, it's just an amazing accomplishment for the township and being able to work the um, the systems you work, Jeff, to uh, get, to get the county to pay for it. So um, that, that gave us the seventy-five thousand that we were put to. So that's, yeah, it's amazing.
So um, so that's great because usually we transfer, so in twenty twenty-five, we transferred ninety-three thousand dollars uh, into the open space fund. And then this year, we're only need to spend, transfer twenty-five thousand dollars into the open space fund. So that's great. Um, and then we've got uh, transfer to park and rec fund. And we're transferring sixty thousand dollars to the park and rec fund. Uh, forty thousand for park maintenance and then twenty thousand for uh, regular expenses.
So we have, we have roof repairs to do in the pavilion, so that's what we're trying to cover.
Perfect. Good. Uh, and then transfer to the capital reserve fund. Um, this is in twenty twenty-five, we did a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This year, you're asking for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what we've been talking about all day, which is the Churchill Road. Um, which is the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is probably low.
Oh, yeah, because we don't have it.
We're going to be pulling and pulling it from uh, we'll also be using liquid fuels to also pay for that. So.
Whatever we can. But it's not that, it's not that Churchill's going to take a hundred fifty Ks that, that's all we have.
Right.
To put, to put through.
I understand. And then transfer to the reserve fund. So this is really the MS four fund. And we're the la, so we've started to transfer two hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund and put it into the reserve fund every year to help anticipate, to prepare for the anticipated MS four costs. And that's our, and I think I like how you, this is our TMDL plan or MS four, however you want to delineate it, but I think we really want to make sure that we um, understand what that money is. But again, um, we have to have a conversation about having a reserve fund. Right? Because the reason we started it initially, we, the goal was to have three hundred fifty thousand dollars in the reserve fund. That was the goal. Just have three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Big problem shows up, we have that money to pay for a big problem. MS four came up and we were, um, I mean, that's, I've said this a lot and I think I've said it every time we talk about MS four, but MS four is the single biggest infrastructure project that the township will have once we start down that process. And um, it's going to, it's, it's going to be a, a little bit more about the same as a robust uh, road program. Um, and so we started to increase how, the amount of money that we, we put into that fund. So um, originally we spent about, I think we put in about fifty-two thousand dollars a year. And the goal was, once we got to um, three fifty, we would stop. And then whenever we depleted it, we would add the fifty-two again. Uh, when we started getting the uh, MS four estimates for the engineering costs for those, that for that program, uh, we upped it to two hundred thousand dollars um, in anticipation of that about four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for, for five years for the first permitting round. And then we would have to reassess it five years. Um, so again, we can leave it at two hundred thousand dollars. We have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there now.
Right. You have no money. I mean, it, it.
So do we?
You can't go any higher.
I'm not saying we should go higher, but do we, do we not put any, do we not put two hundred thousand dollars into the reserve fund this year?
No, because you're going to be taking three hundred thousand out. So no, I think you have to, you can, right now, um, whatever, what's the thing? Churchill's coming from there. So.
Yeah, unless we finance Churchill.
Yeah, I, I still, so I, yeah, you're not going to know. And MS four is just one that it's going to probably cost us two hundred thousand dollars a year isn't going to be enough anyways, until we know what's going on with our grants. So I, I think you want to put at least the two hundred thou, it's not, you're not spending it, right?
No, I know we're not spending it. I understand that.
I would put it in there um, and, and know that it's there and we're going to be pulling from it anyways. Um, whether it's, whether it's for Churchill, if it's not Churchill, it'll be, it will be Thomas, Thompson Estates, it'll be something that we're going to have to pull from to, to, and these are not, you know, this is, they're not mine project. The, the other thing too, I just want to make a column. We were talking about MS four. Um, hopefully we get some grants. I mean, we may, we have two grants going and if we have those grants, we have to put some matching money up. So we maybe pull money out of the reserve for, for MS four. And you know, we'd be thrilled to do it if someone's given us a million dollars, right?
So, no, I think that's, yeah, makes sense to me. Um, fire hydrant fund, that stays the same. It's eleven thousand dollars every year. Um, we can't remove fire hydrants. Uh, and then transfer to emergency services fund. So this is um, you, so originally the budget um, was about a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars more than what's in there now. And we're now saying a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. And that's, that's with the ten percent increase that we discussed today.
Yeah, I, I, just for the public's information, I think it's just, we, we love, we know this is important. This is an important function. And we, and we, we're going to, we want to pay for it, but I just want everyone to know that your tax dollars already have a certain mileage that goes right into the emergency service fund. So that money's already, that's not this. That money's already in there. You're going to see that on a page in this budget. But in, in addition to that, we have to put another a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars in. And that's not even giving the fire company everything they want. That's only giving them a ten percent increase this year. They were looking for sixty. So this, this is something that we know it's important. We need to figure it out, but I just want folks to know, we are, we are funding quite a bit out of our general fund to make sure the emergency service fund, we can give them what we, what we can. And this is the first year that we've had to say no. We always, we've always given them what they've asked for. It's just that sixty percent was just more than we could bite in one year.
Yeah, so that's, and that kind of goes back when we have the point is, is that there's only so much tax dollars we can collect to pay for these fees. So we have, to Dawn's point. And so we have to transfer, and this is why it, it sounds tedious, but it's, it's, it's just the way it needs to be um, outlined is when we, every year, we transfer to the open space fund, the, you know, seventy, seventy-eight thousand dollars, right? Because our open space fund tax doesn't cover the open space bill that we get every year. Um, and that's the same thing for other things we just kind of rolled through, and that's the same thing for emergency services fund. Okay, so, so then we go into the individual budget, um, which is kind of breaks down. I, I don't think, I don't know if we want to go through these, because I think this is, so the rest of the budget, um, we have this multi-page budget. What I, what I just walked through um, was the top line budget items. The rest of the budget is items that fall kind of underneath those, those top line, those top line items. Um, I don't necessarily want to walk through those because I think you're going to adjust that based on what we just talked about.
I, I do.
But let's, oh yeah, okay. Let's go to.
And that's, the only reason, the way, the way it was explained to me and Melissa, if I have, I'm sorry. The way it was explained to me, if I have it wrong, um, you can correct me, that you have to put, even if you don't spend it, you have to put under the expenses that you're gonna, um, you're going to spend some money. Maybe you already have it here. So, so for twenty twenty-six, I know you have sixty thousand for, for salt and we already talked about that. But I, I would like you to put um, a hundred and twenty something in there for um, highway construction or miscellaneous, whatever. for, um, highway construction or miscellaneous, whatever, whatever, whatever number, wherever you wanna put it, I, I, I don't care. But I, I wanna make sure that we have the ability to spend a hundred ninety thousand dollars of liquid fuel if, if we have those expenses that you identify. And if it's a road, or if it's a snow removal, or if it's engineering fees, I don't know. But I, I think, my understanding is you gotta put it in the budget that it's an expense, even if you don't spend it or you can't. All you're gonna be able to do is spend sixty thousand dollars the way it sits right now. Okay. All right.
Remain your other general fund?
No, out of the liquid fuels fund. So liquid fuels is the, the money we get for the miles of roads we have in the township. And so.
If you look at the budget, right, you see, you see that it says at the end of, in the income, you see, it has a hundred ninety eight thousand dollars, right? So what you have to do in order to spend money in twenty twenty six, you have to put something in those, in those categories, four oh eight, three ten, four thirty eight, three seventy two. It's some, something has to show up there besides the sixty thousand, because the way it looks now is you're only spending sixty thousand.
But I mean, you gotta.
Take that up.
That, that, that money that you put in there comes out of the, well, the general fund.
No, it's already there.
No, it comes out of the liquid fuels.
Money's already there. You have the income.
Yes.
I gotcha.
Yeah, I'm just spending the.
He was looking at the right place, saying wrong.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So the money, yeah, I'm not taking any more much. You can't, I'm not messing with the general fund. But it is money that we can spend if we can categorize it correctly.
Yeah.
Correct. And that, that is a top audit account with the state. So I have to be very careful how we spend that. And, um, I don't know if everybody read their emails today, but I've been working with our PennDOT representative. And yesterday, I got word at five thirty last night that I can reimburse from the liquid fuel fund to our general fund, the barricades that we paid for Churchill. So that'll be eighteen thousand dollars coming back in. Out of the, so I would rather spend this money wisely, cuz it's audited. Um, so we don't have any findings in the future. And then I can, I can free up liquid funds to transfer to the capital reserve.
Okay. I don't know. I'm just, I'm looking around to see if anyone wants to go any more, any more budget talk, Betsy. I'm budgeted out too. My eyes are starting to cross looking at the thing. All right. So, so just to kinda wrap it up, um, we're going to have a workshop meeting, and then we're gonna have a board meeting. Workshop meeting, we just have a discussion and we'll, we won't, we won't go through necessarily as detailed this way, this time. Um, and then we don't make it, we, we, we generally don't make any major decisions at a workshop meeting.
Have to do, cuz it's gonna be advertised November eleventh. So somewhere, I'm trying to figure out, you, you wanna give the public what you think is your best guess of what it's gonna look like. It's not final.
Yeah, we're not voting on it.
Right. But you gotta give them some, so November third, we're gonna have to come to some, I don't know if the right word is decisions, but some type of agreement on what we wanna present to the public. Maybe I'll put it that way.
Yes, that's.
It's a preliminary.
Preliminary budget. So we have to get a document pulled together that is, okay, here's our best swag at this.
Right. Now go public, go look at it and give.
Now the public gets a chance to look at it and say, no, you guys need to, they'll come back and yell at us. And so, um, and then we'll, again, we can revisit it, take the, all of those com, public comments. And then November, at the November board meeting, we vote and decide on the budget for twenty twenty six. So, um, that's the process. Uh, and when, and you said eleven, November eleventh is when it's published. So, and then our board meeting will be, what, two weeks after that? Now we're, November, November nineteenth. So, okay.
Well, I think the budget will be finalized at the December seventeenth meeting. And we'll go to public November eleventh. We'll discuss it at the November meeting.
Right.
December, we.
We vote and run, yeah.
Adopt it.
Okay. All right. Where are we? Okay. So next is, uh, four, four, nine Chesterville Road subdivision extension letter. Uh, so the property owner, uh, proposes to subdivide this, uh, twenty two acre lot, um, into two lots, one lot approximately two acres, uh, in, including an existing, uh, what is it? SFDD? Single family dwelling, that's right. Um, lot two is approximately twenty acres and includes an existing barn. They are asking for an extension to be able to obtain the required material to present for review. Um, and so the, uh, again, these are one of these items that happens pretty often. It's pretty common. Uh, someone wants to do a subdivision plan. Um, the plan has a certain timeline for, uh, for, for us to approve. And they want more time. And so this is just granting them an extension. So I make a motion to approve the extension letter provided by four, four, nine, uh, Chesterville Road, extending the time clock for action until December thirty first, uh, twenty twenty five to obtain the appropriate sewage planning and perk tests for the project. Can I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Betsy?
The twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six snowplow and de-icing bid award. The township advertised this bid in the daily local news on September ninth, twenty twenty five, and September twenty three of twenty twenty five. The bid also was advertised on the township website. Please note the unit prices show no increases from twenty twenty four to twenty five contract to the twenty twenty five to twenty six bid proposal. So I propose a motion to award the twenty twenty five to twenty six Franklin Township Snowplowing De-icing Bid to Jim Durazio. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think it's yard works is the appropriate.
That's true.
It's yard works.
Yeah, he goes by both, but I would say.
Okay. Yard works. Any discussion other than that? Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries four to zero.
Aye, Betsy.
Oops. Guy. Solicitor's report.
Still with us.
From Guy.
Uh, good evening. I don't have any, um, active report to present. Things are, things are, uh, are going according to plan and nothing that I think I need to, to raise with the board, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I, I will say this, Mr. Chairman. If you buy an ordinance at the regular price, you'll get a second one, uh, gratis.
Love it. Thank you.
So, so you, you can, you can pocket an ordinance, or at least two ordinances, and not have to worry about the second one. How's?
All right, we're doing two. We're doing two. Let's find an ordinance. Thank you.
And, and while I'm, and while I'm, while I have the floor, when I served, uh, in your role in my hometownship, uh, I, uh, did not take my stipend either. Uh, and the question that always existed was whether it has to be put into the budget as a place, placeholder, because it's statutory.
Right.
And the, the, the way we handled it, uh, uh, for the way I, way we did it for twelve years, because it, each one of us, there were only three, did the same thing. We felt it was, we felt, we felt it was the right thing to do. And, and, um, we would, we would remain, uh, uh, in the budget. But our, our Melissa, the individual we had who served in Melissa's role, knew that it would never, it would never be, um, uh, expended. So there's a couple ways to do it, and I wanna, I wanna look at it a little bit so that we don't have any audit issues. We never did for twelve years.
Is one, is one of those options to do kinda what we do with the, with the, say, the open space fund is transfer from the salary to the library or something like that?
You could, you could make a budget transfer. You could do it in, in several, in several different ways. Um, but I, I, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna premiere my ideas.
Think about it.
But I'll, but I'll let Jeff know what I'm thinking, but it can definitely be done. Uh, I just, it's just a matter of how, of how you, how you, um, document it.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that concludes my report.
All right. Um, so we can, that we're now move to, um, commissions, committees and reports, and I can just take it, cuz I'm gonna read it anyway. Uh, so Mark Zawada was not, was unable to join us tonight, but he sent along the, um, Franklin Sportsman's Association's report. Um, so October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, the FSA provides this update to inform the BOSS about events, activities and deer harvest information that have or will take place during the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six hunting season. Um, membership, as of this date, there are thirty five registered members in the association. And there are eight new members this year. Um, archery proficiency testing will be held for new members that will archery hunt. Uh, additional firearm proficiency testing shall follow for all new members as required. Uh, point two, hunting season. So archery, uh, archery opens September, uh, twentieth and closes November twenty eighth. Uh, and then it opens again December twenty sixth and closes January twenty fourth. Uh, firearm opens November twenty ninth and closes December thirteenth. Opens December twenty sixth and closes January twenty fourth. Um, and then so parcels that, uh, the FSA is permitted to hunt is Banashire, Franklin, Goodwin, White Clay Crescent. Uh, trails, uh, trailhead signs are updated with maps and hunting dates. Um, safety setback boundaries have been, uh, remarked as needed. Harvest report, uh, there haven't been no deer harvested to date. Uh, community service, service project members a year, uh, so July twenty twenty five through October eighth, twenty twenty five have twenty five point five service project hours completed. Um, and let's see, we also have some additions as of ten, twelve, twenty five. And this is handwritten, so forgive me if I, uh, so fifty six hours have been added. Uh, Keen Trail and Mount Olivet have been, um, mowed and, uh, weed whacked. Uh, Banashire Preserve sign has been sanded and painted. Uh, and then Banashire, uh, frontage, uh, we moved and weed whacked the parking lot. And I think that's it. I think the only other, uh, point was for, for Dawn Dowling. But when, uh, Dawn is returned from vacation, I will let her talk about, uh, her proposal herself. Um, and I think with that, we go to Donna.
So Paul, you're so patient with us. So let me just turn it over to Paul Agassi for the Historic Commission Historic Architecture Review Board Report.
Do we wanna let Guy go, or do we wanna keep him?
Oh, Guy, you can sign off.
All right. Thank you. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Oh, uh, we, we might have a question from the public, uh, for you, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So let's, uh.
You wanna do that?
No, let's, let's do the report, and then we're, we're basically done. So let's just do the report, get, and then we'll go to a public comment and then.
All right, Paul.
Okay, so, um, we had a, uh, combined Harb and Historical Commission meeting on October seventh. Um, it was actually, aside from, um, the Harb exclusive portion of the meeting, fairly light. We, uh, were sort of, uh, paused with respect to Churchill. But, um, Nan has done, um, since this was actually written, some additional cleanup work on the site herself. And then we were out there today, um, with, uh, Nan, myself and Jim, talking about, um, what, uh, would be done to get, to move the debris off the site. We've got a couple piles of debris. We've got, some of them have been there long enough. We've got a nice pokeweed growing out of, um, one of the piles of debris. So we have to do some preliminary cleanup before we can do the cleanup, because now we have a still grass problem, which means you can't see where you're walking. So, um, that's gonna be actually the next step for the Historical Commission and any volunteers working with them is to get the still grass under control. The still grass is luckily, um, only in a small portion. Uh, but it is nice thick. And that has to be done soon, because it will go to seed and we need to get it out there. Um, Mount Olivet Cemetery cleanup is on hold, or until afterward. Churchill, um, we also discussed, um, the Mason Dixon Art Corner Plan. Um, but that discussion consisted of noting that it was submitted to the Chester County Planning Commission for review. Um, and then we reviewed the discussion here about the Ditar Creek State Park. Um, we looked at, uh, Sarah Beth Kohat, who actually lives on eight ninety six, reported that, um, they were, PennDOT, the website, their website currently indicates to let the project in December. Um, so whether they'll actually start. Every time I look at their plans, they look like they're slipping. We're interested in this because it affects the village and the other historic properties. But, um, so they seem to be slowly slipping a little bit. We had, uh, um, several members of our historical participated in, um, London Britain's three hundredth anniversary. I don't know if anybody went down, but, um, uh, I actually helped with, um, giving tours on the Welsh Apthus Historic District and, um, uh, helped with the pamphlet on that district. Sarah Beth Kohat, who is, um, written a book on, um, covered bridges, had her own booth there with her books and some other things. And then, um, uh, Lou Mandich was there, along with, um, John Lawrence Senior, John Lawrence Junior, uh, with, um, various old cars. Um, and it was good to see Lou there, because he'd broken his foot and he'd just been about a week out of the cast. Um, as this quick side note on covered bridges, um, the Rudolph Arthur Bridge has been reconstructed and was opened today. So, um, that is a nice note. Then, um, and I will also note that we are going to have, um, in, uh, on November eighteenth, we're doing a, um, a talk with, uh, New London on, um, small, local small history museums. We're gonna have two people come in. Um, Scott Steele at West Grove and Dave Porter, who's got a Chester County Focus Museum, but is in Elton, talk about their museums. And then, um, we're gonna have a handout with lots of little similar type museums that you can go visit. And it would, it could be huge and it won't. So it's gonna be, um, short information on, um, close things, as well as a longer list on things further field. But, um, there's a surprising number of different little local history museums. Finally, um, the Harb, and that's the, um, COA application for thirty three to Appleton. Um, this was our second meeting on this application, which is actually a little unusual for us. Um, we had some, um, there, as, as I discussed in my report, because of what the Secretary of Interior standards are, we found ourselves in, in a position where we might have to um, evaluate this and, and fundamentally ask, say to the supervisors, supervisors don't have to follow us. And we explain that to the applicant, that, um, we could not recommend it for COA. And we explained in a letter to the applicant what, um, sort of changes would, would do this and, um, it would make it work. And the applicant got together with, um, uh, the, uh, person who's doing the drawings, he's not actually an architect, and came back with a set of plans that, at first glance, and there perhaps to most people sell differences, you can see that this was gonna be much better. What would you call it? Uh, it was more compatible with the existing structure. So, um, the changes in many ways aren't, again, economically, they're design changes. They will just make the whole thing work. And it's kind of important, because for the village, this, we're talking about the Victorian Gothic house right over here. Um, it's a sizable and it's an anchor building. And, um, what we've got there now is a two-car garage. And basically, a two-car garage with a story and a half above it is what's being proposed. So it is important that the new construction be compatible with, um, it's, cuz it'll be very large. So you have that before you tonight, along with our recommendation. So you have that before you tonight, along with our recommendation that it receive approval for a certificate of appropriateness. And so at this point, are there questions?
Commend your group for the, the amount of work you put into the, the history of the building and, and the meticulous review you do to make sure that it is compatible. So I was really impressed with what you did.
Yeah, it was, it was not, no, and I will say that we had a somewhat difficult first meeting, and we had an extraordinarily smooth second meeting, which I was very happy about. And I think that, you know, it's just, I, it, it looks good on paper. I hope it turns out that.
Questions for?
I just had one quick, the covered bridge you mentioned, is that on Camp Onsal Road?
Yes, and, and if you call up the location on Google Maps, it currently says the former location of the historic bridge. And I would point out, Chester County actually did its best to rebuild it in, in the style in which it was originally constructed, which is, as we would say, historically appropriate. But if you look at the Camp Onsal Road, it approached, if Google Maps is correct, it has a different name in Elk than it does in New London. The "onsal" is spelled differently. Yes. Well, actually, it was pointed out to me by Sarah Beth. This was not my pickup. But you can zoom in on Google Maps, and you can see that.
Do you want me to bring that question, or?
Please.
So let's do some more business here. So I make a motion to approve the 3302 Appleton Road Certificate of Appropriateness based on the review and recommendation of the Franklin Township Historic Architecture Review Board at their October 7th, 2025 meeting. Can I have a second for that?
Second, sir.
Thanks, dear. Any discussion or any more questions for Paul? No? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say nay. You got it, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, thank you for hanging in with.
I will be super fast. DCNR finally sent the master plan to the task force about a week and a half ago. We have until Friday to submit all of our comments, at which time DCNR will then incorporate our comments to the, into the very end of the documents. So anybody that goes through the 100-page master plan will come to the end with a index of different task force members and their comments. So I'm writing mine. I wrote mine. I'm going to go over them again before Friday, just to make sure I didn't miss anything. And then it'll probably be another month or two before it comes out to the public.
Be with it. I know you sent it to us, so we have it, but now you're not happy.
I'm not not happy. There's some verbiage in there that I have issue with. And there's some open-endedness that a lot of task force members aren't happy with. And then there was something that came out in the news the other day, where they were talking about camping, and they showed a photo of Big Elk Creek. So there's been a lot of discussion with the other task force members about how we want to handle that, and if we want to even mention that, because it wasn't DCNR that, that did that. It was a Pennsylvania news outlet. So it could just be a stock photo. But, given the language, at, at one point, you know, it discusses that the master plan includes, but is not limited to, and then it lists things inside of the master plan, and it's not something that we're really happy with. And there were some other things that they had written in there that I think excluded the rights of the townships and the ownership of trails and things of that nature that they glanced over and didn't discuss. So just some little things that I've added in in my notes, that I know a couple other task force members, at the very least, will be adding to their notes as well. And we'll see what DCNR does with them.
Any word on the word preserve?
So in the master plan, they said that, where is it? I have it in my notes here. They did state that the final name, the name is still provisional. The final name will not be determined until the completion of their cultural resource management plan, which is being done by the 106 group. My argument, and something that I'm including in my notes, is the preserve designation has nothing to do with the cultural resource management. You can designate it a preserve now and still change the Big Elk Creek portion of the name later at the conclusion of their cultural resource management plan.
And you can always say whatever name they want to give it, preserve.
Exactly, exactly. So, so that's just, it's one of their ways. They did identify the fact that it was discussed at length in the task force meetings, and they did agree that the majority in the master plan, that the majority of task force members, if not all of them, do feel that the word preserve is very important, and that they are taking that under advisement. So.
Job, right? I mean, we still, thank you for all you've done, and I know you guys are still keeping an eye on things, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Auntie. See you, Paul.
All right, thanks, Paul. All right, so now I'd like to open the floor to public comment. This public comment can include comments on anything attendees may want to share. Comments are as much as they their name, whether they are a township resident or a taxpayer of the township. Do we have any public comment? I think, if you wanted to come up.
Yeah, come on, so that way Guy can.
Guy can get back to his life.
All right, put your thing on the desk. And say who you are and what I would say.
Nancy Widows, 33-year resident and taxpayer of Franklin. I had a question about whether this group, the Board of Supervisors, had an ethics policy.
An ethics policy?
Is that direct, is that directed to me, Ms. Widow?
Well, I thought you would know, but other people might know too. Let me tell you the reason I raise it is.
Well, I think I can, I think I can answer that, I think I can answer that, or at least direct the conversation in a way that might be productive. Every public official is bound by something that Pennsylvania has called, most appropriately, the Ethics Act. And included in that Ethics Act are certain things that must be done with respect to filing a statement every year, disclosing certain information, in addition to certain prescriptions regarding conflicts and things of that nature. So that is a Commonwealth-wide standard that has been codified. And it applies, I would say, if I was asked, does it apply to this board? I would say yes, it applies to me as a, as a solicitor, and it applies to public officials as well. And it's sort of a way to, the way I summarize it, is it levels a playing field. You don't get elected to a position of, of public trust, and then get to take personal advantage of it. So yes, there's a, there's a, there's a code of ethics. And it's, it's fairly broad and statewide.
Thank you. That, that was my understanding as well. So let me cover this part first, and then I had two other small comments. So my question was then regarding perceived, because I got a number of comments on this from Franklin residents, and a lot of stuff on Facebook, about the mailer that was sent out, where the supervisors individually and on their own, without township money, right? Yeah. Endorsed to candidates. It came over to these people as sort of an old boys' club kind of thing. But also, it came to my attention that folks did raise issues about ethics and the possibility.
Do you feel it's unethical about residents supporting and endorsing a candidate?
Because of the position that the supervisors are in, they're in elected positions, which are covered by this act.
So elected officials endorse candidates regularly. Why would this body be different than any other elected official that endorses candidates?
I'm only saying that I think it would be good for this body to have a clear ethics policy.
We do, it's mandated by the state, as it was just illustrated to you, and we did not.
Understood.
So again, why is it unethical for private residents to exercise their free speech?
It's because you were doing it as supervisors. That was specifically stated in the mail.
We were not.
Happy to provide it to Guy. It does. It absolutely does. So I'll provide it and just see. I think it would be wise to get.
This is a free speech issue?
Yes, I understand.
Just because something's inconvenient to your personal political campaign?
No, that is not my issue.
It is unethical.
That is not my.
I think it is, because.
No, it's not.
This board, I'm going to just say frankly.
Okay.
As, and we also endorsed Dawn Dowling.
Okay.
Sent a mailer to every resident. Nobody complained.
Didn't get it. Yes, people complained.
Nobody complained.
This was two years, I.
Oh.
Both David.
Dawn Dowling.
Okay.
Who is sitting, he's currently.
A Democrat, yes.
Yes, I know.
We supported her publicly.
True.
Sent out a mailer. Nobody complained. Nobody talked about ethics. Now that it's inconvenient to your campaign, you're talking about ethics problems. It's not unethical. It is not unethical.
I do think it is, and I, and I think I will ask for an advisory. So my other things were, I did enjoy the London Britain Fair. I thought it was fabulous. And my understanding is they were founded in the same year that our township was founded in. Is that right? 1725? That's what it said, some of the stuff I read. That's why I wondered.
London Britain, or London Britain Township, London Grove, 1751. We didn't become, we didn't become Franklin until 1851. But we still have a.
Two years to plan.
Uh, yeah, 1851.
Good to know.
We have like five years.
A problem.
Get me around Stacy for that?
She'll hope not.
She will hope not.
The only other thing I would add is that in, in past budget, I've done a lot of budgeting, in past positions I've held, we did do six-month checkbacks with the bigger ticket holders of our budgets, you know, the mainline items like the fire people. It, it's good just to reach out, I think, and sometimes they will forget to tell you if there's something coming, so. I would, I know you're short on staff time, but that's a practice that seems to pay off.
That's a good idea, but I know, in this case, it was such a large increase, you would have thought they would have, I, I called socialize the budget. I mean, I, we would be expected to do that at our positions, you know, to do that, so. It's a good idea. I mean, I think.
One other thing I'll mention, they did, they have come in and give us quarterly updates. And, and the last, one of the last ones they gave us was an update, in addition to the quarterly update, they were telling us about the, the possible consolidation.
I remember.
But they gave us no other information other than that, so.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? All right, not hearing any will adjourn the meeting at, oh, you know what? I gotta cough. I'll do the motion. I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:43 PM. May I have a second? Thank you, Jim. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Discussion.
No, no discussions. Motion carries 4 to 0. Good night, everybody.